You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the August fifteenth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access LaPorte County dot org.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to our August fifteenth meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. I ask that you sign all electronic devices that stand for the Pleasure Allegiance and a silent prayer.
But I can't even sit in the class. And to the Republic for witnessing one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice.
That is chart. Ms. Dudley on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Merrick.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Zegus.
Present.
Ms. Tillman.
Present.
Nine here and zero absent.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie. We do not have the minutes for our August first meeting, so those will be carried over to the next meeting. Reports of standing committees. Councilman Preswellinsky. Oh, Councilwoman Deitch, sorry. Councilman Preswellinsky. All right. No worries. Fin- Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. On August fifteen, twenty twenty three, the Michigan City Finance Committee meeting did not have a quorum to move forward. We had an informal meeting. Those that were in attendance was Councilman Don Preswellinsky, Councilman Dapney, Councilwoman Angie Nelson-Deitch, myself, and Councilwoman Delia Ziegus. We also had Controller Hoffmaster and her staff in attendance. The Michigan City Riverboat Claims Dockets for August fifteen, twenty twenty three. Riverboat, Riverboat Fund number two, two, three, five, in the amount of forty four thousand, three hundred eighty nine dollars, twenty cents. Riverboat E F T Fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boyd Development E F T Fund number two, five, zero, four, zero dollars. Total claims forty four thousand, three hundred eighty nine dollars, twenty cents. Those were for Northern Indiana Mechanical Inc. in the amount of thirty thousand, five hundred, forty nine dollars, twenty cents. And J and B West Roofing and Construction, thirteen thousand, eight hundred, forty dollars. Again, the total claims is for forty four thousand, three hundred eighty nine dollars and twenty cents. The City of Michigan City Riverboat Statement of Cash Positions Fiscal Year Today, August fifteen, twenty twenty three, ending balance six million, two hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety five dollars and eighty four cents. Also, we discussed and from the Controller, so Office Controller Hoffmaster dispersed out to the council members that was in the attendance and the Finance Committee, the twenty twenty four budget hearing workbooks. So those that were in attendance received them and also those that are currently here this evening, if you have not received your twenty twenty four budget workbooks, please make sure that you see Controller Hoffmaster or one of her assistant deputies in her department. Also, thank you to all of the department heads that responded and complied by answering the Q and As for your twenty twenty four budget, the needs that you need for your departments. And if those departments that have not turned theirs in, I'm still accepting those. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Claims ducky. August fifteenth, twenty twenty three, fund twenty two, thirty five, Riverboat Claims in amount of forty four thousand, three hundred eighty nine dollars and twenty cents. E F T zero, Boyd Development zero. For total claims of forty four thousand, three hundred and eighty nine dollars and twenty cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
What have most to approve by Councilman Don Preswellinsky and seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. Ms. Delia on the vote, please.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Zegus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Delly. Reports from boards and commissions. Reports of select or special or special or select committees. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. Michigan City Mayor Dwayne Perry. Ms. Butner will not be here with us tonight to give an update on the promise scholarship as she is ill. I have a report that on August eleventh, a meeting was held here in City Hall to address the issue of the homeless in Michigan City and the panhandling. The meeting was facilitated by Michigan City Police Department in cooperation with the mayor's office and the Chamber of Commerce. The purpose of the meeting was to engage the businesses of Michigan City and whatever members of the public are interested in this issue and willing to take action. The meeting was successful. Many good ideas came out of the meeting. And the next meeting will be held October twentieth, depending council members will be interested in attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Petitions.
I'm sorry, there are no petitions this evening.
Oh. I understand. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the mayor was talking.
If you want to. Councilman Dabney.
Yep, and this is going back to the report that the mayor gave. I did not get a chance to attend that meeting, didn't know about that meeting until after it was over and I received a ton of email, ton of phone calls from the business owners down in the downtown area there, no others from the Chamber of Commerce. And at some point, we need to hear as a council and as the public what we plan to do because I know they're crying out to have a police presence down there. You know, down in the downtown area because they're talking about some of the people that are coming in, they're urinating in front of the businesses. People are running in, threatening people and things of that sort. And that's been a big ask of them is what they wanted, some police presence. So I don't know if that came up, but I would like to know if, well, they said it came up. I would like to know at some point, you know, do we have some kind of plan moving forward? I know we have the segways and that. So we can have a car parked down here, somebody can walk the beat, whatever it may be. But I'm just wondering, did that come up in, or is there a plan, I'm sorry, to do something like that in the future? Or is this an ongoing thing that won't be talked about until October?
There we go. Go ahead, she might. Well, I was probably gonna say what you're gonna say, so I'll just sit here and give you support.
Steve Porcher, Chief Police, Michigan City Police Department. And now again, those concerns that come up and that was, you know, part of the meeting was obviously hear some of their concerns and get some of their feedback and what they, you know, what they would like to see and how we could help them. So since Friday, since our meeting, we've already started those, I would say, community policing patrols, right, walking the beat. You know, so we've already started that stuff within our department. That was something simple that we could already be doing. So we enacted that starting Friday. So they should be seeing more of a police presence. Obviously with that too, you know, we, you know, we advise them of some of our manpower concerns and calls for service concerns as well. And some of that stuff may dictate, you know, how much of a presence, but we're making a conscious effort to have a more of a presence there and making some of those contacts with some of those individuals. So already working on it. And again, like the mayor said, planning on meeting again October twentieth at nine AM here in the E O C. So again, if anybody else had any concerns, again, we'll plan to meet them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you plan on sending out some type of report to let us know, like when patrols will happen or anything like that, or you can just send me something. I would imagine everybody else will be interested as well.
Yeah, we're, you know, we, again, I created an email group with our businesses that were down there. We started that today just to, again, have those communications and formulate that plan. So that's in the works. So I'll be more than happy to include you. And probably just include the whole council and you guys can.
Yeah, so this comment is not regarded for you. There's someone that's online that sent me an email that was asking about it. And they asked, were there ordinances to deal with those, those types of issues? And I just, I sent an email in response. But I wanted to tell the person, in case they didn't see the email, that we do have ordinance in places, ordinance in place to deal with the issues that she was concerned about. So, thank you.
Yep, I got one, one quick question, Chief. So is the goal or the, the effort to remove the individuals from the area or to deter negative interactions with other citizens?
I mean, I think it's a combination of both things, right? Ultimately, we're trying to help them get services and, you know, provide care that, you know, maybe they need or maybe they need assistance with, you know, and on the same note, too, we want them, want the businesses and the merchants to, you know, shop downtown, have, you know, frequent customers, you know, without negative interaction as well. So I think it's, you know, it's multifaceted efforts on, you know, across the board.
All right, thank you, Chief.
I would add to what the chief said that Chief Porcher and Chief Coily explained to all the businesses that were very adamant about removing the panhandlers and the homeless from the Uptown Arts District, that legally, we have no tool to do that. That once upon a time, the state of Indiana had laws on loitering and panhandling. But unfortunately, the American Civil Liberties Union took Indiana to court and the laws were nullified. So what we talked about was engaging with options and with material benefits like food, chips for food and medical supplies, whatever, rather than giving in with money. We felt that was the best way to go. But we, but the final plan has not been generated yet. We will get deeper into this at the next meeting on October twentieth. Thank you.
Yeah, if I, I don't have any questions, Mayor. No, I just have comments on the subject. Can we expound a little bit more?
Yeah.
Okay. So I originally set up a meeting with the mayor and the city attorney and the chief of police. Probably two and a half months ago, I believe, and brought this attention and brought this subject to mind that it's a subject everybody in town is talking about. I hear it from everybody everywhere I go. So it's time to step up and start addressing it. So we had a, we had a meeting. From there, they had another, we had another meeting at the police station with the Chamber of Commerce involved and business leaders and the non-for-profits in town that deal with the homeless folks. And then from that meeting, then we had the other issue that came up with benches, you know, being removed from the downtown area. So then, you know, I progressed and we had another meeting. And then that's when this meeting came up with the merchants downtown. And the one thing that I do want to say is that the panhandling, there's nothing wrong with panhandling, but we have to get the, the news out and it will be distributed. But I'm going to say it here from the council chambers and on people on TV, people in the audience, that panhandling is not illegal. Panhandling is protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution, free speech. Where the issue of panhandling comes in, where it becomes illegal, is if a panhandler aggressively chases you down the street or keeps bothering you to say, hey, I need some money, I need some money. And you don't give it to them. So if that does happen, what you have to do is you need to call the police right then and there and tell them what's going on. And hopefully, an officer will get there in time before the panhandler takes off. But you have to do it right then and there. You can't wait till you get home, can't wait till you get in your car, call the police and say, this is what, this is what happened. And the best way, you know, we see a lot of panhandlers on the south side of town. Lowe's, Myers, Menards, Walmart in that area there. Four hundred North, they're out there every day. We all see them. In my mind, and like the mayor said, yeah, the the best way is that we're trying to be humanistic with these folks and try to tell them that there are different entities out in the community that can help them if they're that destitute. And the other thing is, a lot of the panhandlers aren't destitute. I think they make a, a job out of this on a day-to-day basis and they stand there, get a few bucks and do whatever they're gonna do with it. I've heard stories, but I'm not getting into, to that. So my best suggestion is, don't feed the problem. Don't give to the panhandlers. If they want to panhandle, they can go somewhere else and panhandle and, and see how they, they do in that, in that situation. But I think the best way to get rid of the problem is to stop feeding the problem and let it, and then we'll see what happens there. But yeah, on October twentieth, if anybody here on the council, anybody from the public wants to attend that meeting and come up with some other ideas, that would be great. And just one more thing I want to add that the police department has started is a intervention team with the police officers in the afternoon, I believe is when that happens the most. And they go out with the new psychologist or social worker that was just hired by the police department. Yeah, Rachel, I believe her name is. They go out with Rachel and they talk to these folks, to the homeless folks, the panhandlers that they want to be spoken to and ask them if they need help. Tell them where the help is at. So we are trying to make an effort to be humanistic with these folks and trying to help them. Now, there are some folks that don't want to be helped and that's just reality. And if you don't want to be helped, you don't, you don't have to be helped. So that's where we're, that's a little bit more definition to what we're actually trying to do. And one thing I do want to say is that I believe the benches in the downtown area need to be put back in the downtown area for the businesses, for the visitors, for the folks of Michigan City. I don't think some homeless people should be chasing the citizens that live here, the other thirty thousand people out of the downtown area. Now, if, if those benches, because I went online, they actually sell benches that eliminate sloping on them. They have all different kind of configurations that you can buy of these benches. You know, they have a slam to them. They're only maybe two seated benches. Yeah, you don't have to have a full eight or ten foot bench out there that you, you can lay your blanket on and your pillow and take a nap in the afternoon. Nobody finds that inviting. So there are further steps to be taken. But yeah, I just want to say that I brought that to the administration's attention. We're working on it and hopefully we'll get this situation better and under control. Thank you.
Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, final comment. I just wanted, with Don's explanation and his thoughts and ideas, just wanted to reiterate the fact that these people were calling me, they don't want people removed because they're panhandling. They don't want them removed because they're homeless. They want to curb that behavior of people being attacked and follow people running into businesses and things of that sort and yelling at the folks. So that's why they want the police presence, not to just sweep people away because they're homeless. They're looking for just relief in terms of some of the illegal behaviors, they're urinating in, in the doorways and things of that sort. So I just want to make sure that they didn't get this, this bad rap about them saying they just want to sweep everybody away because they're homeless. That is not the case. They just want to curb the illegal things that are happening down there with people being harassed and so forth. So I just wanted to clarify that before we move forward.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. President, is that, you know, the administration, the police department, the social workers, everybody, we're not looking at trying to sweep away homeless people or panhandlers. We're trying to get them the help that they need if they want to help. But I agree, yeah, the other things that are taking place down there, police presence, and we talked about that two, three months ago, what's going on in downtown area, you know, you hear about, you know, people defecating, drug needles here, people camping out in the alleyways, in the doorways, and that's all being addressed. And yeah. So we're not just trying to sweep people away. We're trying to help them, get them in the right direction and possibly bring them back to a normal life, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on August seventh, twenty twenty three, from City Clerk Gail Nyla asking the council to approve the twenty twenty four proposed budget she turned into the mayor and the controller's office in June twenty twenty three.
And Ms. Nyla, in her absence, acts that this letter be read into the record. So the subject, twenty twenty four mayor's proposed budget, Dear Mayor Perry, I was surprised to see from the budget worksheet report for the twenty twenty four budget that you eliminated the position of Assistant Deputy Clerk, Deputy Clerk from proposed twenty twenty four budget for my office. This was done without discussing the matter with me, even though I am an elected official. Perhaps you were not aware that Indiana law places the authority for determining the number of staff from my office with me and the council without any input from the mayor. One dash C three, six, dash, maybe. One C three, six, dash, four, dash, one, one, dash, four provides that I can appoint as many deputy clerks as authorized by the council. In addition, one C thirty six, dash, four, dash, seven, three, D provides that, subject to council approval, I can set the salaries of my employees. Perhaps you are not aware of all the work performed and many services provided to the public and others by the city clerks. But I can assure you that even without your proposed reduction in my staff, we can hardly keep up with the workload. Because I have a statutory duty to make sure that the clerk's office does the work that does the work and provides the required services. I intend to proceed to discuss the twenty twenty four budget from my office, including the number of deputies and their salaries with the council and Indiana, as Indiana law requires. If you have any further questions or wish to discuss this matter further, don't hesitate to reach out respectfully. Gail A. Nyla, City Clerk, Michigan City, Indiana. Resolutions.
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the engineer of the general fund number one, one, zero, one for the year twenty twenty three in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yeah, real quick, it just is continuation of what we've been doing in terms of putting more money out there towards paying our engineering services. And we told them, previous meeting, as they just continue to come back to us as needed. So that's all this is doing, was a transfer to cover this eighty five thousand dollars to be moved to cover engineering services.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Tillman.
I just have one question. So from the decrease to the increase of the eighty five thousand dollars, is, do you anticipate that this is going to sustain till the end of twenty twenty three? Or would they be coming back seeking more?
I am not certain of that. I can't predict what would happen in terms of engineering costs. So for me to step out on a limb to say this eighty five thousand dollars will cover us to the end of the year, I could not say that. But I do know that this is what is needed to cover engineering services at this time. I don't know if the city controller would have, you know, that's still a tough question for them because they don't know what engineering services are going to be needed. I see Yvonne moving to the microphone, so she's gonna jump in here in a second.
And if I can, so these are for future expenses, not any pending?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yvonne Hoffmaster, City Controller. The contract that is before the Board of Works, the additional appropriation that was passed at the last council meeting and this transfer will fully fund the amendment to the contract that the Board of Works has approved. And we do anticipate that this will cover their expenses for the remainder of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Councilman Paul Preswellinsky.
So with that information, how much have we spent to date on engineering services?
Yep, one second. We're gonna look that up for you.
What was that?
They're, they're looking it up.
We're looking it up for you. One second.
Okay, thank you.
A positive word card, make it happen. Make it happen.
We'll look that up and send it to you in the morning.
Okay, well, what's the total with our last appropriation and, and this appropriation to fulfill or to fulfill that contract? Is this gonna extend, is this gonna extend the contract at the next Board of Works meeting?
Yes, this appropriation will extend the contract through the end of twenty twenty three.
So is, is, am I thinking correctly, this is about two hundred thousand with, with these two different appropriations as of right now? Like half of the year?
It's about right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Preswellinsky.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Ziegus. Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Zegus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
That's eight in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read our next resolution, uh, by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the Michigan City Common Council celebrating Women's Equality Day, and this is introduced by Ms. Um, Angie Nelson-Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, before the deadline, I, um, asked, um, I know that Councilwoman Ziegus and, um, Councilwoman Tillman wanted to be, uh, co-sponsors for this, so if you can make sure they're at it, and I would like to read it into the record if that's okay. If that's okay.
Please proceed, please proceed.
A resolution of Michigan City Common Council celebrating Women's Equality Day, whereas on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, the women and men of the United States of America are celebrating Women's Equality Day or and are seeking ratification and enforcement of the Equal Rights Amendment. And whereas the Equal Rights Amendment was approved by Congress in nineteen seventy-one, the United States House of Representatives, with the United States Senate offering final approval of the amendment with the requirement that it be ratified by the thirty-eight states within seven years, and whereas the thirty states ratified the amendment in the first year with the total of thirty states ratifying by the nineteen eighty-two deadline, and three states ratifying it after that time. And whereas on June twenty, June twenty twenty-two poll by Data for Progress show that eighty-five percent of the people polled support the Equal Rights Amendment with only ten percent opposing it and five percent not sure. And whereas on July thirteen, twenty twenty-three, a joint resolution was introduced into Congress stating that the amendment has already been ratified and is enforceable as a twenty-eighth amendment to the Constitution. The resolution states that the National Archivist who is is responsible for the certification and publication of constitutional amendments must immediately do so. And whereas on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, the women of the United States are celebrating Women's Equality Day and are asking for the ratification and enforcement of the Equal Rights Amendment. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of Michigan City, Indiana honors Women's Equality Day and supports the ratification and enforcement of the Equal Rights Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And this resolution shall be in full force and affect after passage by the Michigan City Common Council and approval by the mayor. And, um, this was brought forth by the Women's Commission, um, they actually put this together, um, asked that we present this to, um, the council in celebration of Women's Equality Day on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Council, uh, Councilman, uh, any comments from the public? Comments from the council, Councilman Preswellinsky?
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, and also I would like to make, uh, a few comments about the Equal Rights Amendment, that, um, I remember going to a few uh, informational pickets about the, uh, Equal Rights Amendment, and after a lot of thought in being a union rep and seeing how women were being treated, uh, at one time at the, uh, my place of employment, they, uh, made women who were pregnant go on sickly without any pay. We also had problems with, there was an identif- uh, identified cause, uh, with research that women that were working in the coke ovens were having, uh, a very high rate of miscarriages. And and there was a lot of data and information put together and I I gotta say, after having three sisters and, um, we need, we definitely need to appreciate women in our society, and especially at this time in, uh, when a lot of people, I I think, don't, I I think it's a very, uh, troubling time right now uh, because of the, uh, situation that we have with people trying to take over women's sports, a- and I just think that we need a you know, a lot of these athletes are being stepped on. A lot of women athletes are being stepped on at this time, and we need to do something about it because there's a title, am I thinking right, is it Title V or Title A? One, nine, okay, but, okay, excuse me, I, uh,
He was close.
You know, m- my intention is good, all right, maybe I didn't have the right title, thank you. But the whole thing is, I can remember when there wasn't girl's sports, women's sports in college, in high school. And I think that women have just a bigger right as men and opportunities should be there and left them for women. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I mean, Councilman, Councilwoman, uh, oh, sorry. Councilman Simmons?
I'd just like to be added to this resolution, please.
Does anyone else want to be added? Uh, I think we all do.
I want to be added.
We all do. Councilman Tillman?
Motion to support.
Second. What, any more comments? I have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Tillman and seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. And Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Zegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read our, uh, next resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, amending section three E of resolution number forty-eight thirteen to remove the one-ton dump truck with plow from the list of essential equipment for the cemetery department and add two UTVs to the list of essential equipment for the cemetery department. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And comments from the sponsor?
Yep, uh, real quick, um, we had approved, uh, money for the the one-ton, uh, dump truck, and they saw that that would not be as practical as, uh, turning that over and getting two of these UTVs, um, in its place. Uh, so it would work out better for that department, uh, and make things a little more easier uh, for them to do what they need to do. So there isn't any change in the dollar amounts, if I'm not mistaken, on that, but what they're doing is just swapping out the one-ton dump truck for two, uh, UTVs.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I have a question to Councilman Dabney. So what do they plan to do with these UTVs?
I am not exactly certain what they plan to do with the UTVs. I just know they said it's not practical for the one-ton dump truck, and they rather replace it onto two UTVs. Is there anybody here in the department? There's Yvonne again that could help me with explanation.
Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. They'll be used to do maintenance throughout the the two cemeteries, one for Greenwood and one for Swan Lake.
Do they have UTVs there right now?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Is there anybody here from the cemetery department that can answer any of these questions? Apparently not.
Well, I can say we've never purchased any.
Pardon?
We've never purchased any.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Preswell.
Um, do you, do you have a rough estimate how much money this is gonna save? And because I'm wondering if they wanted a one-ton dump truck and now we want two ut- two utility vehicles, all-terrain utility vehicles, um, I would imagine that there was some need at the time, because it was or was supposed to be ordered with a plow. So that that evidently never transpired, right?
That is correct. Uh, what I was told is that the pathways through both of the cemeteries are too narrow for a a a dump truck with a plow. And these UTVs will have plows on them. Um, I believe they'll have enclosed calves so they can be used year-round. Um, the fifty-five thousand that is remaining of the ARPA funds to buy will is enough to purchase the two UV- UTVs, but the fifty-five thousand was not enough to purchase a one-ton dump truck.
So, uh, okay, the one-ton, I can understand that. So they, they couldn't even use like a three-quarter ton truck to get by, to get out there? I I I thought that was the whole purpose, so, you know, that the way I'm looking at it, that three-quarter ton truck's gonna last longer than these these two UTVs with the amount of snow that they're gonna be pushing. I just I don't get it, really. I I don't get it because how you can go from a dump truck to two UTVs, you know, because there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of snow to move out there.
Control Hoff, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but are they gonna, uh, the UTVs stay at one location or they, will they be moved back and forth?
It's my understanding, they, that's why they wanted two, one at each, Swan Lake and one will stay at Greenwood.
Any other?
It, it, you know, I I'm just gonna say that, I don't know, uh, after the the discussion we had at the last council meeting about all the problems that are there, I I don't know. I I I don't know why the superintendent isn't here to discuss this. That's my problem with it, one of them.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Can I make a motion that we table this, hold this up until the next council meeting so that we can have a representative, uh, from the cemetery to answer these questions?
Uh, we have a motion to table, or Councilwoman Tillman is seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. Ms., uh, Dudley on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Zegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read our first ordinance, uh, by title only? On first reading, by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating section twenty-two dash seventy and section fifty dash one five one in the Michigan City Municipal Code to require a solid waste disposable plan for each application to the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department for a building, electrical, HVAC, and/or plumbing permit, and creating section twenty-two dash eighty-two C in the Michigan City Municipal Code to require that a building site be cleaned and all construction debris be removed before a certificate of occupancy is issued. And this is introduced by Don Preswellinsky, Ms. Angie Nelson-Deitch, and Mr. Bryant Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Uh, Mr. President, yeah, I would like to make a motion to, uh, table this ordinance at this time, and that we, uh, have a workshop. Second.
Uh, we have a motion to table pending the workshop as by Councilman Don Preswellinsky is seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. Uh, Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Ms. Zegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Unfortunately. Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Uh, can you please read our next or ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section fifty-eight dash sixty of chapter fifty-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code and amending various sections within chapter ninety-eight of the Michigan City Municipal Code pertaining to garbage, trash, and rubbish. This is introduced by Mr. Don Preswellinsky, Ms. Angie Nelson-Deitch, and Mr. Bryant Dabney.
All right, any comments from the sponsors?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, again, I would like to, uh, make a motion to table this ordinance.
Second. Uh, what's the table until?
Uh, we we will table it until our September nineteenth meeting, because I'm trying to get a workshop put in there, maybe on September the sixth. Because our house, our city attorney that wrote these uh, ordinance is out, she's gonna be on vacation for about a week, week and a half, so I want her to be there when we have the workshop, so I'm looking at September the sixth, five o'clock. That's okay with everybody. I'll send out a notice.
Yeah, so we have a motion to table until our September nineteenth meeting by Councilman Don Preswellinsky and seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Zegus?
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read our next, our first one that's on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section fifty-four dash one five six in the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding the determination of final rating for applicants to the Michigan City Fire Department. And this is introduced by Ms. Angie Nelson-Deitch, Mr. Don Preswellinsky, Mr. Paul Preswellinsky, and Mr. Gene Simmons.
Any comments from the sponsor? Uh, Councilwoman Deitch?
Yes, this was, um, read on first reading at the last council meeting. I I was not, um, there. But, um, we've had a couple of, um, firemare commission meetings, and I know this was discussed, but I do have an amendment. And I'm looking for it, and you all received it, and it was just an oversight. It was always the intent on including, um, police for, looking for it, I'm sorry. Um, the amendment is that we add children of firefighters or police officers killed in the line of duty. Yes, on two C, um, we, um, inadvertently left that out. So I would like to, uh, move to amend this um, ordinance, uh, with the change to C on page two to include firefighters or police officers.
Hey, we have a motion to amend by Councilwoman Deitch.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky. Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Zegus?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Any other comments from our sponsors?
Yes, and so, um, this was just the first, uh, take on uh, trying to, uh, change the the specific weights of the final rating. Uh, I know that there were several discussions that were had. Uh, I know that there were several discussions that were had, um, in reference to. Um, what was the, um, written examination, residency. Uh, personal interview, military service and et cetera, and the changes. Um, that were made, um, added education. Um, into the final determination. I know that, um, just like with the police department, we talked about. Um, lateral transfers, um, so the education piece would also, uh. Assist in some of the cost of training. That when you bring, uh, laterals over, when they have that, uh, EMT license or some of the training that they have. Um, that could assist with some of those costs. So, um, this was, uh, recommended, um. And you all received those letters of recommendation for that, that came from the administration and the union. Um, so I presented it as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any comments from the public?
Yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm also the common counsel appointed to the Michigan City Fire American Mission. I'd just like to note under section fifty-four point fifty-seven of the Michigan City Municipal Code. For every three openings of the Michigan City Fire Department. Two of the openings are to go to a minority and a woman, okay? The, 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 this is not being done. This is true the myth, the racial makeup of the Michigan City, of the city. I want this to be looked at. I would like you all to review that ordinance, and that needs to be done. There, there, there was this lateral transfer. I wanted that, that to be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kalavich.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. I've also been to those workshops as well. Um, Tommy's right, um, but from a legal standpoint. Uh, federal judge, I think was, uh, Alan Sharp. He put that, he signed a consent decree in nineteen seventy-eight, I believe, and it's a done deal. But here, we want to continue to violate that. Someone can easily just file a motion to show cause and ask them why they're violating this. We cannot violate federal laws or court orders. It cannot happen. I don't. I love the union. I think everybody should join the union, but we gotta look at this for why this was put in place. Uh, the federal judge said Michigan City Departments. Practice racism for a long time, all Michigan City Departments. And that's why he did not. That's why the judge did not put an ending date on that dissent. So I hope that we make sure we do the right thing and do what's right. And what the judge wanted to do, and make sure we protect all people, our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Comments, uh, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Wayne Reitzel. My address is forty-two ten East Michigan Boulevard, Michigan City, Indiana. Uh, within regards to what they're saying, Michigan City is known for trampling on rights on a repeated basis, including theft by the police department. Which I'll address later on at the end of the meeting, but we also have outside predators that aid in this problem. Uh, within regards to the hiring practices, it hasn't been followed for a long time, uh. Yeah, I've, I've heard things from other employees within the city where they're being picked at because of their race. And it, you know, that's gonna stop real quick, cause if it don't, we'll just have the city dissolved. Because I actually filed a tour against Michigan City and the state of Indiana, and they've been served. So I'll be addressing that like the court required me to for the rules here in a little while. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Deitch?
Um, yeah, uh, so as stated in the, um, ordinance two, um. We have a, a section in there that talks about the, the consent, you know, judgment. And making sure that we keep the fifteen points, um, for the Michigan City residency, um, included, um, in there as well. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that was, um, noted that that is in there, that has not been removed. Um, and the other thing that has been enhanced is military service as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Any other comments from the council?
Councilman Presmelinski, um. You know, discussing the, uh, court order. Before we even discuss that, you need to get it out and read it. Okay, and also that when you're under a, um, a consent decree. Which I work at a place that was under a consent decree, and it was. Uh, disbanded because of, uh. It had met its intent. And that was done about fifteen years ago. But the, but the thing is. Is I would like somebody, cause this comes up quite often, I would like to know. How? How can we get someone? To apply for the job? And, uh, and I believe that if you read the consent decree, it speaks for itself. I have read it. And, uh, I think, I think that what's in this ordinance goes quite far. To encourage. People from Michigan City to. Apply for the job. Now, I can't go into the school system and, and promote it. But that's where it, that needs to go. Maybe the fire commission needs to approach, the fire commissioners need to approach the school system. And see if they can have a informal, uh, day there and talk about the career. Or even with the police department to get more people from Michigan City wanting to do it. And I think that also that we need to look at the state of Indiana on when they can be hired. Because there is, I don't understand why somebody can get drafted. Has to sign up for the selective service system when they're eighteen, but they can't get hired as a police officer. I just, I don't understand this. I really don't, but we need to work on our legislators to change it and, and we need to. Get that changed at the state level, and maybe we can get more people involved. Or even starting a legal cadet program. To get people involved with the fire and police department. So I'm not, I'm not trying to say what. Should or shouldn't happen, but I think that we all have a stake in this. I think this is, um. A, um. Some, something that is going to help induce the way I read it. City people to apply because it, it does favor Michigan City residency. Thank you.
Councilwoman Deitch?
And, and I would like to add that this, this last group that we've had, um. They were Michigan City High School graduates. Um, we had a couple. Um, that are new firefighters and that even, um, our programmer AK Smith. Um, is finally, we're seeing fruits of that for the police and the fire, which is a good thing, um, so. Um, with that being said, I would like to move this to, um, third reading. Um, this is, I moved to move this to third reading.
Second.
We have a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and move this to third reading by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Presmelinski. Um, Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Mister Dabney?
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mister Mack?
Aye.
Miss Deitch?
Aye.
Mister Don Presmelinski?
Aye.
Mister Simmons?
Hi.
Miss Zegus?
Aye.
Mister Paul Presmelinski?
Aye.
And Miss Tillman?
Aye.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read this ordinance on third reading? By title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending section fifty-four dash one-five-six in the Michigan City Municipal Code. Regarding the determination of final rating for applica- applicants to the Michigan City Fire Department. And this is introduced by Miss Deitch, Mister Don Presmelinski, Mister Paul Presmelinski and Mister Simmons.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Uh, yes, uh, Mister President, and, and the reason being, this month, at the end of the month, applications are due. I, I think you all recall that we passed, um, a change to the age based on the age, um, requirement for firefighters. Uh, at the last council meeting, and, uh, we start testing next month. Um, that will be happening. I know that applications are being, uh, are being received. Are we done receiving? I'm, I'm not sure, Mister Kalavich or Mister Doctor or somebody. Are we still receiving applications?
No, they have.
It close.
Going to our testing on August twenty-second.
Thank you.
And they'll move on to other, left past the latter five, they'll move on to physical agility training.
Thank you, Mister Kalavich. So, um, that's the reason why I asked for a third reading.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
Uh, Mister President, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Presmelinski and seconded by Councilman Paul Presmelinski. And before we go to the vote, I, I have one question. This is probably a silly question, but if, if the ages, uh, move to eighteen.
Under forty-five.
Okay, but I.
I mean, under, under forty is what we did.
For the limit. The other question, the question was about the, uh, the twenty-one. Now, if someone was eighteen and was on the fire department or the police department and they needed to. Enter a establishment that was age restricted, would that affect that?
No, no. Uh, I, I think that would have to be addressed by state law. Okay, be, that, but that is a good point, but I wanna also add this to it. If somebody's eighteen years old and they can get hired into a, a dangerous environment, like the steel mill.
Or the military.
Or the military, they darn sure should be eligible to be a fireman. Or a police officer. I think that we have to think forward and be progressive in this thing. And we have to work on the legislators to do something about this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Uh, Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mister Mack?
Aye.
Miss Deitch?
Aye.
Mister Don Presmelinski?
Aye.
Mister Simmons?
Aye.
Miss Zegus?
Aye.
Mister Paul Presmelinski?
Aye.
Miss Tillman?
Aye.
And Mister Dabney?
Aye.
Nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read our next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance creating section two dash four-one-one in chapter two. Of Article Six of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a fund for affordable housing and senior housing repair. Within the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Miss Tillman. Miss Deitch, Mister Don Presmelinski, Mister Paul Presmelinski, Mister Dabney and Miss Zegus.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Um, thank you, Mister President. So as stated before, the purpose of this ordinance is. Due to that Silver Birch was established or the development contract was done under a pilot agreement. And under that pilot agreement, um, there was a combined, there was a combined payment of. Twenty thousand dollars for the tax years that the Silver Birch was partially assessed prior to the certificates of occupancy. By the city at seventy thousand in the first tax years in which Silver Birch was completed. And fully assessed after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. With such amounts increasing therefore by one percent per annum for each subsequent year under the pilot agreement. So by doing this, um, from my understandings from prior conversations and, um. When they implemented this agreement, it was to have been believed that they wanted those funds. Because of pilot agreement, those funds aren't supposed to go back to, um. Low income housing as a, as a tax, it, it's as a tax credit program, however, but those funds should be. Utilized for seniors and low income families. So I'm requesting in this ordinance that a special fund, a specific fund be set up that those funds that have come in. And future payments that are coming in from Silver Birch to the city that is currently going into the general fund. Be set aside to put in this specific funds for seniors, seniors that needs home repairs and low income families. And for the assistance of, for a, affordable housing for individuals. Um, I know before, at the prior council meeting, it was, the question was posed. Um, how would they be able to apply for this application when these funds become readily available? So there has been communications, um, and dialogue and how we would like to implement this. One thing I definitely wanna make clear that if we do. Decide to, um, mimic the, how the CBD. G Grant Fund application is done, I am not seeking at all for these funds to co-mingle. With them whatsoever. By doing it this way, because they have, there are more. Um, strenuous guidelines for the CBDG in regards for those that can be eligible. But this may help out those individuals that is on a fixed income, but just missed the threshold to be eligible for those other funding. So hopefully that these funds will help them to be able to get the necessary repairs done. More so to streamline what type of requirements for maybe housing, um. Porches to be put on, if they need an ADA accessible, any things of that nature and windows to be more specific. I see some contractors that's in here, so again, these are some things that is gonna benefit the community as a whole. And this is something that should have been done a long time ago.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments from the public? Oh, uh, Councilman Dabney, sorry.
Um, and you know, I like this program in regards to the money being able to be put to help. Um, the elderly picks up homes and that, and this is, this seems very similar to what I tried to pass a long time ago. Uh, regarding the weatherization program through the North Central Community Action Agency. Uh, so I'm happy that money will be able to be used to, to fund projects like that as well. Uh, to, to allow people to be able to stay in their homes rather than have to sell them. Um, so that's why my name is a, a co-sponsor on this, so I'm, I'm really happy that we're, we're doing something to. To assist these people who may not be able to afford, uh, the repairs to keep themselves in the, in their homes, so, um. That's why I, I'm, I'm really in favor of this.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, Mister President, yeah, I think that this is a, uh. A great idea. That's why I signed on and also as a, uh, co-sponsor. And, cause I've, I've been receiving calls from. Uh, a few folks as far as they need repairs done to their house. The one woman has a, uh. A gutter laying on the side of the house. She has windows that are in disrepair. Siding and disrepair, and I just got done talking to, uh, Sherry Wilson. And we were talking about the CBD, uh, grant. I guess that's the right acronym for those. And she said that she just got done ta- talking to the lady and that the lady had called her and said that the ceiling. In her bedroom fell, so she's got, you know, she's in dire straits and we're trying to help her in that respect. But this here is just another avenue to help folks, you know, fix their houses up, cause there is a, uh. There's a need out there, and, uh, this here is another avenue to do that, so I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any comments from the public?
Yes, my name is Wayne Reitzel, forty-two ten East Michigan Boulevard. Yeah, this, this program here is a good program. But we just wanna make sure that we don't tax them out of their home after you put new windows in, cause that's one of the things that raises your taxes. I mean, you, you put some new windows in, you sew a new roof on, and the next thing you know, taxes go up. And then all these old people become part of your homeless problem. So that needs to be stuck in there that the taxes can't be raised until that occupant leaves that property forever. And, uh, as far as the qualification, when I read some of these grants and, uh. Assistance for public aid, they have this, uh, hundred and thirty percent below poverty level. No, we need an actual dollar amount that says, hey, if you make thirty-five thousand, you may not qualify for it. But if you make under thirty-five thousand cash, then you qualify, but not these percentage stuff. And as far as your housing goes for. And as far as your housing goes for a lot of these people, move that section eight office back here to where we can have somebody accountable in question. Because I've talked to people that say they've been on the list for three or four years, can't get housing, and they got children. So like I said, when there's, there's options for me to address some things as far as your uh cemetery situation, make sure you get a snow blower with that ATV. And make sure that your lawn mowers now have the attachment for the weed whackers that attach to that that just dropped down off the side of the technical. It'll cut your labor costs. So there's lots of options here. It's just they aren't getting discussed and equipment from like uh government dot U S can buy payloaders and stuff for two, three thousand dollars. Uh, pickup truck, you guys could probably bought that for about four with a plow. And just had it rebuilt, a new motor, it put in it with through your city office over here on Kentucky Street. They could have did that a lot cheaper than what you guys can go out and buy a brand new vehicle. With the company is not gonna guaranteed staying behind the warranties that they issue because they have lots of problems with that now. So like I said, I'll be back a little later and address other things.
Thank you.
Ernie Alahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Uh. This says for seniors that it does it include young people in on too? Because I have a young lady behind me that really struggling. Uh, she's got four kids and trying to make it on her own because her husband, after fourteen years deserted her and left her for another woman and she's living in her grandmother and grandfather's house. And it needs a lot of work, a lot of work. I I've asked Don there to come over and check it out, but we'll have to get together and.
Okay.
Thank you.
No.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Ms. Tillman, thank you. About time somebody caught this. Several other things that need to be caught. Thank you for getting it done. This is something that should pass right now. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Right, thank you, Tom.
Oh, yeah, just real quick, addressing what was being said about setting dollar amounts, you know, if you make more than thirty-five thousand, da-da-da. But you do have to put into consideration, you have to number of people in households and number of children and things of that sort. So that's why these, a lot of these programs are done on a rubric like that uh where a dollar amount is set with with the the salaries and or the household income, but you also have to put it to consideration, then we're thinking, you know, number of people in the household. Um, and that's how a lot of that is done with the, when they talk about the income and the the level of poverty and so forth. So I understand what you're, what you're saying, but there are a bunch of other moving variables in there as well that have to be taken uh into consideration. Well, I don't know about all that. The point is, I'm just telling you how these things are set up.
Addressed, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Tillman. Councilman Tillman.
I I have one comment and um I would like to make a motion to suspend to have this on third reading.
Second.
But my, but my comment is, um, the comments that were just made in regards to how it will be structured. That is still being looked at, and that is something that I did consider that I um recommended as well, that there's a set a specific dollar amount, but there's a lot of um things that has to be taken into consideration as well. The other comment was, it says for seniors, no. This ordinance says for seniors and low income families as well, and possibly, hopefully, it may also be eligible for renters, I mean, for landlords to fix up their buildings or their apartment units. So if this is gonna, if it can help overall, but keep in mind too, this is a fifteen-year pilot agreement. We've, we're already in our fifth year. So if we can move this for a motion, we had a second. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the uh council?
Uh, yes, I'd like to be added as a sponsor and also I agree with uh Councilman Dabney on uh this, it's a great, great piece of legislation that we're doing and we had something similar a while back and hopefully that ready-made list of people that are already approved for federal uh home assistance, but they need a little other assistance. Hopefully that ready-made and sitting there list of people will be one of the first things we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
You have a motion.
Motion to suspend to have third reading.
Second, uh, we already did that.
Yeah. Ms. uh, Dully on the vote, please.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Zegas?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dully. Can you please read this ordinance on third reading?
An ordinance creating section two dash four one one and chapter two of Article six of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a fund for affordable housing and senior housing repair within the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Presmelinski, Mr. Paul Presmelinski, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Zegas, and we're adding Mr. Mack.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
For.
Uh, motion to approve by Councilman Don Presmelinski and secondly by Councilman Dabney. Uh, Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Zegas?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
And Mr. Mack?
Hi.
That's nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Can you please read our uh next ordinance on second reading by title only?
All right, give me one second. All right, an ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section forty-six dash thirty-eight and section fifty dash two-six-nine in the Michigan City Municipal Code to prohibit the use of compression release engine brakes, Jake brakes, and the city limits. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Presmelinski.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Um, yes, I have, they, the, excuse me, the attorney's office was working on uh specifically areas of the community where they wanted to have this posted. And I have not had any feedback up to now, so I would like to keep this on second reading and table it to uh I'll go with September nineteenth. Is that a meeting date?
Yes.
Yes, right.
A second there.
We have a motion to table until our September nineteenth meeting by Councilman uh Paul Presmelinski and secondly by Councilman Deitch. Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Zegas?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch?
Hi.
Nine in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Dudley. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute intermission.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we gonna call a meeting back to order? Ms. Dudley, can you please read our first ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the city of Michigan City, Indiana to issue one or more series of its taxable economic development lease rental revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Zegas.
Any comments from the sponsor? Councilman Deitch.
Yes, and we we've talked about this. I know we have some representatives here that can answer questions for the council um this evening. Uh, Mr. Brendan Bogan is here and um we also have um our attorney from the redevelopment commission and um our planning director, um, Scott York here. So I'll just defer. Oh, and on on the, on the screen, I think we have Andy Mauser, Brian, is Brian Prince on there? Uh, we have several folks on here. Randy Rampola. So we have a full full team of folks to answer any questions or make any comments.
Any comments from the public?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. My name's Nick Pollock. I live at two eleven Anne Street here in Michigan City, born and raised, lived here my whole life. First off, I'd like to uh show my appreciation for the resolution recognizing women's equality as a father of three young daughters. I appreciate that very much. I wouldn't expect anything less for them to be treated any differently than anybody else. Um. I think that's what makes me so passionate in what I do on a daily basis. I am a representative for the carpenters union. Um. I think what drives me is the contracts that we work under that provide equality for everybody on a job site. Um, unfortunately, this day and age, a handshake and a promise does not go very far. Okay? Anybody that's heard me speak in public knows that I am a champion of Michigan City. I'm a champion of Michigan City moving forward. I am not against any development in the city of Michigan City. I'm actually a proponent for it. I think Michigan City is poised to be one of the greatest places in the United States to live in the next few years. Especially with the recent development of the prison going away and Nipco being decommissioned. Nobody else in the country has the lakefront that we have here in Michigan City. The problem that I do have and the reason why I'm here tonight is I'm afraid that some of this development moving forward is going to undermine the taxpaying citizens of Michigan City. And the reason I say that is the developer that is looking to develop the property at eleventh and Franklin Street, the most recent project they've done in Northwest Indiana, they use unscrupulous contractors on that project. I seen it firsthand. Okay? They bring these contractors from out of state, from out of city. They come here, they do the work. A lot of times these workers are being taken advantage of. Okay, we hear a lot about people that are being trafficked for sex. We don't hear about the people that are being exploited for labor. But it happens every day. I see it personally. Okay, I can sit up here and tell you how great I was uh in math. I don't pretend to be an accountant. I can tell you I can read ordinances. I can read law books. I don't pretend to be an attorney. But what I do know is I know construction. And I've worked both union and non-union, so I've seen both sides of it. And when I worked non-union, I worked for a guy. It was just me and him. And I got paid with a paycheck every week with the proper tax deductions on it. But what I see on a daily basis is I see people coming in from out of state and working on these large construction projects that are being paid cash. And that is undermining the communities that they are working in. I do not want to see this happen in Michigan City. I would ask that the council be proactive on this and we put some sort of assurances or insurances in place to protect that from happening to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Nick, um, when you are talking about assurances, would you describe to the council what what you're talking about? Is it a P P L or a?
There's a couple different ways that you can approach it. One is a project labor agreement. A project labor agreement addresses that specific project only. You can put into that project labor agreement what kind of language you want to have in it. A lot of times, a project labor agreement refers to using local labor. Um, a lot of the project labor agreements are used in Northwest Indiana, utilize the Indiana plan, which we are currently in the process of trying to get a class started right here in Michigan City at the NICA Training Center over on Eighth Street. So this project, if it were to utilize a PLA, that would be a funnel for the people that we could put through this training, through the Indiana plan. You could also implement a responsible bidder ordinance that is tied to the tax funding or any kind of tax incentive or TIF that is tied to that project. That's been done. I believe La Porte County has that ordinance already in place for their redevelopment commission for the county. Um, you can also add sections, I believe, to the ordinance that you were looking to read on third reading tonight. You can add a section in there uh adding the PLA or whatever language as a council you want. So that it bounds, binds the developer to that language, to the requirements of the council that are approving twenty-two million dollars to this developer. My question is, if they get the money, they build the building, how long is it gonna take to pay off this bond? Are they gonna be around? If it's a twenty, twenty-five year bond, my oldest daughter's thirteen. She's gonna be almost forty by the time this bond's paid off. Who's paying for that all these years? We are. What in, no offense to the developer, but once the building's done and they make their money, why do they care? And and I just want to say this. I'm not against, like I said, Michigan City moving forward. I think Skylar York and Clarence Halls are doing an excellent job in working on the redevelopment of Michigan City. I want to see us move forward. This project is going to be a spotlight on Michigan City. And I think this project needs to set the standard of what's expected in Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Willa Faimore, five fifteen Gray Street, Michigan City. I have a question about, will the Human Rights Department be overseeing the workers? Because on the South Shore Development, you know, what they're doing, I don't see any minorities working out there. And um, we're supposed to have an ordinance that, you know, so many minorities supposed to be out there on these projects. Now, maybe I'm just not out there the right day. But uh, when I'm out, when I drive around the city, I don't see us out there. So will the Human Rights Department be checking there who's working on these projects?
Mr. President.
Good evening. Alan Serenek, I'm the attorney for the redevelopment commission, twenty-seven ten Franklin Street, Michigan City.
Can't hear you.
Could you please? Is that better?
Yes.
Alan Serenek, I'm the attorney for the redevelopment commission, uh, twenty-seven ten Franklin Street, Michigan City. Just in response to what Fay just said, uh, the city has no control over that. That's strictly a NICD project. Uh, and that's a federal project, so we have nothing to do with that. That's one thing. But I, what I really wanted to respond to is is the comment that was made with respect to Clarion Collins. is, is the comment that was made with respect to Flaherty and Collins and why the redevelopment commission and the commission and the committee that was appointed uh, to evaluate, um, the various bidders for this project, developers for this project. The thing that stood out more so with Flaherty and Collins and anything else, and we covered this at the meeting two weeks ago. And that is the fact they're around. They have a, uh, in addition to being architects, in addition to being developers, they are also a management company. They are also a, a leasing company. They will be around here for forty years. As to the comment that it's going to be here twenty-five years and his children are going to be in their forties, who's paying for that? The developers are paying for that. They are committed to over eight hundred thousand dollars a year on the bond retirement. And they are all, and then, and again, from something that you approved two weeks ago with the TIF development and, and a new TIF being created specifically for this project. That is going to generate enough income from the increment from this project to pay the debt. And again, I'll borrow your line. I am not an accountant. I don't understand that stuff. But Andy Mauser, who also has made a presentation to you who's here tonight, in their evaluation of the finances for this project and for this bond, the ratio was for every dollar that is spent on the bond, the increment, increment is generating one dollar and fifty cents to pay off the bond. So even in the worst case scenario where no increment is developed, you know, over the next twenty-five years of this bond, there will still be enough money to pay for this bond. And realistically, you know, if we don't develop any increment over the next twenty-five years, we've got bigger problems than, than everything else is being talked about. Uh, there will be an increment. Everybody has said it, including the last gentleman. This is the, this is a, 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 a in a unique opportunity for Michigan City. It's a, uh, transformative type project for Michigan City and the area. It will generate growth. It will generate jobs. It'll generate development. It'll generate positiveness for Michigan City and the entire area. The question about whether, you know, what, what, who, who we're going to have to construct it. Again, the answer is, we know on the federal side for the garage, that's a federal project. That has to be union oriented. Again, and I don't do contract or, or contract, construction work, but it seems to me that if you have union jobs and union workers that are working on the garage because federal laws requiring it, aren't those same companies going to bid because they don't have to worry about, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Where, you know, where they, where mobilization costs? Because they're already here when the construction starts beginning on the mixed-use building. No. Final thing I just want to say, I, I just had to address that other part with respect to Flaherty and Collins. I mean, we know what happened down on the port. They know what happened down the port. You know? This will be, there'll be accountability to make sure that doesn't happen again. They're committed to it. They know that. And, and, and we know that. But, um, the oversight is there. The oversight has been there. And the contract that's being developed and has been developed protects all of that. So I understand the concern from the last time, but, but I don't want to, I don't want you or anybody else to think, you know, that we're going to have a developer that's going to come in here and as soon as the thing is built and they get one or two years of profit, they get the heck out of here. That's not going to happen. They're going to be here for the full twenty-five, thirty-five, forty years. And I'm not just saying it because it's Michigan City, but if you look at their track record and you look at their work throughout the entire country, we are not unique in that situation. They do that all the time. They build so that they can manage. And that's what's going to happen here too. Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen, Annie Street. Mr. Serenek get paid to do what he just did. Tell lies. Smoke screens. Historically, Michigan City, when new contract, new company, new, eh, new business or any development comes here, minorities are left out. Women are left out. I don't know why. I don't know why this continued to happen. But I think the gentleman made it clear and Ms. Moore made it clear, there needs to be some safeguards in place to make sure that the, that the union is here working, minorities are working, and women are working. How many more projects are we going to enter into? And these people get here and they leave and they gone. They have no reason to stay here after the, the project is done. One of the things I, I just, I wrote a letter to Rodney Paul and I asked, is there any way they can change the legislation when it comes to redevelopment? I don't think no elected official should ever sit on a redevelopment board. I'm very upset with the projects that's going on in front of my house or behind my house with this Zorn Brewery nonsense. I mean, Burnham Brewery nonsense, forgive me. Um, I don't see no minorities over there working it. I ride by it every day. But you come into a minority neighborhood and take it over and change the makeup of the neighborhood. You're looking for more residents from Illinois with more money, uh, to come into our neighborhoods. These breweries don't serve us no, not one bit. This project they're going to do is not going to serve the majority of the people that live here. We're basing it on the Illinois people or anybody else that's coming from out of town. We, the people, need to wake up. You continue to vote straight Democrat, you continue to vote straight Republican. These are the problems that we have when we elect these officials who don't want to do the service or the deeds or the business of the people. We got a choice now. We got a choice. Election is coming up. I've been saying this for years. It's election is coming. We need to pay attention to what's going on. Mr. Serenek stood here, said everything, but never ensured you what that man said was right or wrong. What that man said was right. What Ms. Moore said was right. You guys need to put some safeguards in place. If you can't do it, then don't do the project. You owe it to the people of this city. You owe it to the people of this county. You owe it to the women, the young women, the young kids who's looking for jobs when they get out of school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's John Carr. I live at nineteen oh two Northwest for Crossing. I'd just like to make a couple of comments, um, in regards to the, uh, the attorney that was up here. I don't remember his name, Serenek, I believe. Alan, something, but, uh, um, he mentioned that there was, uh, I think he referenced safeguards or oversight on the project, um, but failed to mention what the oversight was. Um, you know, I think with, uh, the city making a big step forward with, uh, the financing of this project, I think the very least that the developer could do would be to sign a project labor agreement to involve the community on the project. Uh, that's the only thing that's going to ensure that the community is involved with this project and that we have local contractors. Uh, you mentioned that we all know what happened in La Porte. Do we? Okay? A lot of things happened. So I, I think, uh, as a resident of La Porte County, lifelong resident, I think it's, you know, the least we can do to protect our citizens and our community. And, uh, you know, make no mistake, this project's good for the community. We're supportive of it. We just think that we need to, uh, protect the residents of Michigan City and ensure that local trades are involved in this project. Thanks.
Thanks.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jim Clared. I live at two seventy-three West one hundred South. Um, I don't want to say too much more because there's been a lot of great points tonight. I'll tell you, Nick, um, the scope first really did an excellent job at outlining everything that us and the trades stand for. We certainly support this project. Um, and I will say that as far as the minority outreach, uh, we are all in the Union Building Trades affiliated with the Indiana Plan. Um, the IBW, which I represent, I'm the business manager of IBW Local five thirty-one. Um, actually, the gentleman that runs the Indiana Plan, Roman Bronson, is an IBW member. So we certainly utilize that plan all the time and certainly would, uh, moving forward with a project like this. And then all I really say too is that as the, uh, La Porte Building Trades President, um, if you were to put PLA, PLA language in there, I will certainly be willing to sit down with all parties that want to sit down and I will make that happen.
If I may, um, I would like, uh, one of the three speakers to tell the audience what actually the history of, of what happened in La Porte. If, if you would, Mr. Carr. Because, uh, I believe as, uh, as many union people work here, it, it behooves us to understand what happened in La Porte. And I'm not so much blaming anybody, but we need to be progressive and look ahead and look back at our mistakes and not let them happen again. Thank you.
So I'll, I'll just be brief, but, uh, when the La Porte project came about, um, the trades have, uh, met with the mayor and, uh, he facilitated a meeting with the developer. And we expressed concerns to the developer and, and the developer ensured us that everything they do is legit and that we had no problems to worry about. But then as the project started, we started noticing contractors from Ohio, Indianapolis. So we took, uh, a few of our members, uh, received a job out there and worked and obtained evidence. And it really didn't take long, like a week, but, uh, they were being paid via check with no deductions. And, uh, they basically worked with the prosecutor's office for a year and, uh, compiled all the data and, uh, prosecutor finally filed charges. So the workers are all getting paid kind of under the table. And, uh, yeah, it was pretty rampant.
Can you speak too? Cause I, thank you for those videos too. Um, it, as far as the, um, the subcontractor, because I, I want to make sure we're clear too on how it was a little bit more detailed. So there were subcontractors that were the ones that were prosecuted. Is that correct?
Correct.
That were, and then the oversight, well, I just want to talk about the, the difference between us and La Porte as well, as far as some of the oversight.
Well, it's not your jacket.
I know. I usually had green on, but anyway, um, the, uh, so there, I know with the, with what happened and they talked about it, it was in the newspaper. It was a subcontractor um, that was doing these dealings. And my, my, I guess my question, and I don't know if someone from the team can answer this, but, um, our, our laws are a little bit more restrictive than La Porte's um, when it comes to our ordinances and how we oversee those projects versus La Porte is my understanding. And so I, I just want to make sure that, um, when we talk about Flaherty and Collins, because it was said that, you know, they come and then they leave. They manage all their projects after they leave. You know, the majority of their projects, they do that. Um, but the prosecution was, it was a subcontractor. And one of the things that, um, I share, uh, I have a problem with people being farmed in from Texas or somewhere to do the, to do the work and, you know, and you know, we talk about minorities on the project, but, um, we're struggling to get, we need help getting minorities into the union too. And with the last Indiana plan that I had meetings with and had people there, nobody showed up here locally for those sessions. So my next resort was we go to the high school and, and Nick, he, he understands we took twenty-eight students over to the, to Maryville. Um, because we can't get folks to show up for the Indiana plan either. So we need help on all facets and we have a, a residential hiring ordinance. So we may have folks that are in the union that are not working locally, but working somewhere else. So I just want people to understand there is a difference. Um, so I, I don't want to do smoke and mirrors either saying that, oh, everything's, you know, it's not what it is because we can't get people to show up. And it's going to take local leaders and churches that had that initial meeting. We had four sessions that, that week. And I think three people showed up for the Indiana plan.
Yeah, I was a part of those.
Right. And, you know, so we did radio, we did all kinds of things. So I, I just want everybody to be clear. You know, we support our unions, but we know that, um, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. And I think we need to work with the unions to figure this out. Um, I know that we have to buy American for the, the parking garage, which, um, this thing has gone out to bid twice. And we still are waiting on bids for the mixed use that those are coming out on Friday and they're getting union and non-union coming in for that. So I, I just wanted to be clear, you know, we don't want outsiders coming in here doing unscrupulous things. And we don't want, we want people to be here um, doing the work that are regional workers, but if they're non-union and as Nick said, they gotta be worthy of doing the work and have the experience and, um, have everything in place, all those things. So I, I just don't want us to get up here and and bash and call people liars or things like that, but um, just to be clear for the record, you know, what, what's going on. So I, you know, and I, I support everything that you all are doing, but we have to figure out how we're going to get local people on these jobs.
Yep. And we can do that. And, uh, I appreciate that. And I will say a, a PLA will, will definitely work towards that goal. And we found, um, the last two years, we've probably taken in a dozen minority residents of Michigan City. So we got them straight from the AK Smith, the last two years, probably six each year. So that's working.
It is working. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yeah, I have a couple of questions for the, from the gentleman from Flaherty. If you can come to the microphone.
Yes, sir. Brandon Bogan with Flaherty and Collins Property.
Yeah, goo- good evening. Uh, when we, when you, you folks were here two weeks ago, uh, in the workshop that we had prior to the council meeting, your, uh, is that Mr. Flaherty or?
Dave Flaherty, yes.
Yeah, yeah. When he was here and we got into the, uh, discussion about using US American-made steel and also hiring union workers for this project. And I asked him to go out and see if you guys were going to buy American-made steel. Contact, you know, US Steel. Contact, uh, Cleveland Cliffs right down the road here. See what they have to say. And as far as union workers, the percentage of union workers that are going to be on this job, he said that he really didn't know. He, I think he used a figure somewhere between thirty and sixty percent, but he really didn't know. So do we have any answers from the meeting, from the workshop that we had two weeks ago?
Well, to answer those two questions, at first, in regards to the steel for the project, the parking garage has the Buy American provisions on it.
No, I, I understand that. I, we're just talking the project you guys are doing. Yeah, I'm not worried about the, I'm not talking about the parking grides tonight. We're talking about your project.
I understand. We're building both of them.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't, I don't, okay.
We're building both of the projects. So parking garage has Buy American provisions in that the mixed-use project, which is the residential twelve-story structure does not have Buy American provisions on that project. Within that, that the building is going to be load-bearing metal studs is the main structure of it. It's not like a wide-flanched structure, um, which I, as I understand from talking with people from US Steel, they don't produce metal studs.
That's not true.
They produce wide-flanched, large steel beams and components like that, correct?
Uh, I think, I, I think you may be wrong. I worked at US Steel for thirty-seven years and when I left there, they were making steel studs. I know the gentleman that headed that department up made steel studs. So I believe you're incorrect on that.
Okay.
All right.
In, in terms of the project, we, we don't have a provision for Buy American. In terms of the project, we, we don't have a provision for Buy American on that, so we are going out to bid on that. As of right now, we have bids due on Friday for the mixed-use structure. Um, within that, we do not have criteria within the documents to require Buy American on that project. In terms of the union provisions. We're going out to complete bid on both. In terms of the garage was out to bid, it's actually gone out to bid twice, um, because of having struggles getting bidders to come to the table. So gone out twice on it. The mixed-use structure, we have bids due on Friday. And out of that, we're getting a combination of union contractors and non-union contractors bidding on the project. And our intent is to take the lowest and most responsive bids for each one of those. So at this point, we can't commit to what percentage would be union until we've seen the bids to know where we're coming out in terms of all the. All the different trades coming in and providing bids for the project. Obviously, within a market like this, we'd expect it will be a large percentage of union. The project over in Mishawaka ended up being about forty percent. Union on that job. Um, just based on that demographics of that area, so I, I would guess this one to be comparable, just based upon the mix. You guys have very strong unions within this area. Great contractors, so. Within those, we, we'll take the lowest and most responsive of the bids.
Okay, and with that being said, that you guys are going to take. As many union workers as possible. Would you be in favor of your company putting together a P L A with the uh. Unions? And with the city council in order to get this project? Would you be willing to sit down? With the city council and work out a P L A before this project starts?
At this point, we have bids due on Friday for the project. We have, we have a budget we've already prepared in this working. I mean, it's about you and working through all the budgets and what. All of it comes together in terms of the incentives that are coming in from the city. And we already have that budget in place. And within there, it hasn't accounted for a P L A agreement or anything to that is. To that effect.
Okay, my question is, my question was. Would you be in favor of? Or no, a P L A?
At this point, we would not be in favor of P L A based upon where we are today, because we've already gone out to bid with documents. That do not have any provisions for P L A in it. We have bids due on Friday.
I have a question too.
Yes, I'm going to go. I'm going to excuse you, sorry.
Oh, yes, I have a question then. Um, so it is late to do the P L A. But what can you tell us? What kind of assurances can you give that we're not going to have a subcontractor such as happened in La Porte? That is not doing the right thing.
There are unscrupulous subcontractors in this world. We, we can't get away from that. We do our best we possibly can to vet them out and go through everything. I mean, the projects of La Porte, we had an issue. The subcontractor was propane. They came into it. They were a drywall and painting contractor on. Drywall and painting subcontractor underneath our construction company on the project. As soon as we were notified of the issue, they were terminated from the job. We worked with the city of La Porte to actually have their registration within the city removed. And we've actually filed charges against them as well, because it ended up costing us quite a bit on our side as well to. Go in, have them replaced, go in and get the job finished. We're committed to getting these jobs done and. Things like that do happen. Uh, we don't want them to happen and we do everything within our power. Make sure it doesn't happen, but there are times, there are. Bad groups in this world and we can't get away from that.
Were, were they a local company?
I don't.
Yeah, because that, I guess that's, if, if Mr. York can get a, and, and. I guess my, my concern is I know that we register all of our contractors that work in the city.
We register subcontractors, contractors, their subs, we, we register everybody.
And so we would know if.
Absolutely, we would know if, if, if this group, we'll watch out for that. I mean, are you, if this group came along, we. We would probably not. I, I mean, we could do the same if that's what we wanted to do. Uh, we do have that power to. Reject or, but we're not licensed. Uh, yeah, we do, we do, we do license everyone in the city. And we're pretty strict about it, as you guys have probably been hearing. Um, so we, we have. We're, we're, we're just a stricter. We're stricter than La Porte about it.
Because I just don't want storm chasers. When I say storm chasers, um, you'll, you'll have contractors because we got this big project that show up from. Texas, Florida, you know, wanting to do work as a subcontractor and, and we don't want to see. Storm chasers showing up in the, in Michigan City trying to get work.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to probably work with Mr. Bogan and, and look over the, the subs, you know. Or probably just go through the list of contractors and subcontractors.
And can we, can we assure that we're going to have some type of contractor review? Uh, of some sort, I mean. We see, okay, because that, I guess, uh, you can see our concern is about the contractors and who was, who's showing up on these jobs.
I totally understand, totally understand. I understand Mr. Pollock's position as well.
Okay, thank you.
I totally get it. And, 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 and I think the fact is, is that, you know, contracts are due Friday. It'll take you guys probably a little while to go through those. Um. Uh, we, uh, they'll probably select, um, and then at that point, Tom, hopefully like it maybe notify us of all contractors and. I don't know if they'll have, they should have their subs chose by then, maybe. Like, the, the subs.
The sub will be coming, these will be due on Friday. And there will be all of our subs coming in on that. And then we'll be vetting those out, going through a buyout process within a couple of weeks. Any contractors that we do not know, that we've never worked with, we're going to sit down, we're going to go through their financials, we're going to understand. Who they are, how they do work and make sure that they're good contractors.
And, and also who they hire and where their employees are coming from and where they live.
Yes.
Yeah, we can help out with that. I can get, I can get my uh. Um, inspection, no, I'm sorry, non-inspection, my, uh, yeah, inspection staff to help out with that, to help review that. We need to. You know. Get Sue involved and sit down and literally go through them all, that, that's fine with me. We can do that. We'll make time to do that. Absolutely.
See, Mr. President, that, that, and that's another concern of mine, because we say we're going to do this, we're going to do that. We have three people in the inspection department right now. We have two inspectors and a building code. Uh, supervisor, and then how are we going to manage a multimillion dollar? Twenty-two million dollar project with three people. In the office that can't, that building permits just for homeowners are two weeks. Three weeks behind now. I saw the number change from three now.
Yes.
But now we're going to have time to take care of a twenty-two million dollar project downtown to see who's coming, who's going. By looking at paperwork. I, 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 I don't know, I, I, I got a little. I got a concern with that. Maybe if you hired ten more people. Between now and the time that the project started, you might be able to do it, but I don't see how those. Those three people are going to do it.
I agree.
But, but I don't think that's what we're saying. We're not going to be monitoring the day-to-day. That's still in Flaherty. What we monitor, what we will monitor, we'll have to do the inspections, so to make things, sure things are installed correctly. Those will be done. We're talking about contractors right now. We're probably going to have to have a contractor because a twelve-story building, you're going to have to have someone there. Probably literally every day doing plumbing, electrical, et cetera, all these inspections. So we're probably going to have to have a contractor. I cannot put Sue there for three days straight, four days straight. I need her in the office and do it as normal. So we're looking at.
My concern.
Yeah, we're looking at a contractor.
And we hire. Uh, pro, well, is he considered a project manager?
Which one? Um, he is, he is. Yes, he could be a project manager. Yes, we made allocations for that. Use them as we need, uh, but what we're looking at is, uh, probably bringing in maybe a previous inspector. And using them on a contractor basis where they're just spending their time at this building, uh, really, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Dutton. Didn't have the light on, but, oh, that's all good. Yeah, I mean, obviously, this information, I got a call from somebody earlier today. So this is very late coming into me. I wish I had heard about this. Weeks ago. And so now I'm, I'm in the position where I know how the, the whole bond is working, timing of the bond and everything like that. But. I want, you know, like you said, these assurances and I'm, I'm listening to our, our planner here. And I really want to make sure that the three guys that came up here, people like that are being done right by. Um, with what we're doing here. Um, obviously, I'm excited about this project coming here, but I want to make sure that our guys. Are. Taken care of when it comes to that, the people from Michigan City, the, you know, the union workers around here, because I really support them. And, uh, you know, it, it's a little concerning that this has popped up. In this big conversation last second for us, um, to hear all of this information, so. I hope to, to God that we have the proper assurances and the oversight. What we were talking about earlier to make sure that these guys are, are going to be done right by. So that's where I'm at with this and could I have our attorney? Real quick. Uh, it, it just, this is something totally different, just to address a question. Um, we had somebody come up talking about minorities being hired. For work. In these projects, because I know our hiring ordinance itself is a residential. Like fifty percent of the people need to be from Michigan City in order, you know, to, to own these projects, type of thing, that's a requirement. But I know it's no race. In that hiring ordinance and, and we went back and forth with this maybe three, four years ago, four years ago there. With that, and could you explain that in regard, I mean, I know I'm putting you on the spot to talk about.
He doesn't have it.
I, I can't speak directly to the.
All right, just.
But I can't say in general, uh.
Your mic, your mic.
I'm, I'm sorry about that. Uh, I haven't, I haven't seen the ordinance, so I can't speak directly to the ordinance that you're referring to. But race-based hiring and city ordinances violates federal law.
Yes, period.
All right, any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Oh. Sorry.
Wayne Rysel, forty-two ten East Michigan Boulevard. With the circumstances with some of these contractors, I've worked around the country, they're very stiff contractors, there's. Some very interesting ways they avoid. People like you in your inspections department, uh, ten ninety-nine, W four. They just give these people a nice little placard for their side of their vehicle and they drive up and they don't actually work for the company. And they just bypass everything that you guys do. It's, it's not hard. You can have your inspector out there, they can have picture ID that says they work for that company and it doesn't matter. They don't. They may not be skilled in one way or the other. But here's the circumstances. When it comes down to the inspection, just have somebody there that makes sure the work gets done right. Because I've been through that process where the work doesn't get done right. And suffered repercussions to having to rip things off and redo things. And twenty-two million dollars is going to be a really nasty situation, especially if you use some Chinese steel. See all the vehicles being recalled? Go ahead, use some of that, see what happens. You're pretty aware of that. You work for the steel mill. So, uh. Buy American seems to be, uh, maybe want to change the contract because safety over twelve-story building. I'd say I'd pull the contract and just. Be worth it to have the legal fight to have that instilled in there. So, because our roads, we use that Chinese steel in the rebar out in front of my house. Two, three years, it was gone. Trash. So. We don't want no more of that. Would you guys be willing to change that over to get? Steel from American? So here are some of our.
Yeah, uh, rest the chair, please.
In terms of the steel provisions on this, like I said. Part of it is coming in with the bids of where we are and what's in there. Terms of looking at it as a pure Buy American product work, open to looking at that, there may be additional costs associated with that that we just need to look at.
Because I'm the guy that rebuilt Cold Shield, Cold Steel Sheet Mill, the cooling tower out there, I rebuilt that by hand myself. Fifteen years ago. Okay, so I'm aware of what goes on in some side of some of those plants. And some of our steel. When they took all the Volkswagens away, they took them to US Steel and they just dumped them down in there, grind them up, put them back in and then reformulate metals. But those vehicles, they actually got two hundred miles per gallon on diesel. That's what they didn't tell you guys. That's why they outlawed them.
Any other comments from the public?
Hang on, because Ernie Hallahan, real too glad this street. I, I started out at Pullman Standard. I was railway workers' union there. I went to Alice Chalmers UAW Union. I went to Volleteer for twenty-two years, Teamsters Union. I've been in union all my life. And they're slowly going away. With the right-to-work law they passed. They don't even have a Teamsters Hall in Michigan City anymore. Local two ninety-eight that was on Ohio Street became one thirty-five. Out of Indianapolis. It's totally gone now. It's a landscaping place now. So it, it's sad to see the unions gone. I mean, I, I'm past. My working days, but I feel for the younger generation coming up. They have no protection. Thank you.
Hi, John Carrigan, just to kind of. Respond to a little bit of what he said. The, the union in La Porte County, the building trades are very strong. The carpenters went from four hundred members to over seven hundred members in ten short years, so the building trades is strong here in La Porte County. And we need to start this project on the right foot. The gentleman here. Said that. American-made steel was not. In the bid specs for the private portion of the project, but then he just told you that he would look into it. But when you asked him about a P L A, he said it was too late. Bids are due Friday. How long ago was this project awarded to Flaherty? Were they selected? It's been a long time. And you're going to tell me the bids are due tomorrow. The final reading on the ordinance or this week, final reading of the ordinances this week. But you already bid the parking garage twice, so from my experience in La Porte, I can tell you the bids are due Friday. They're not going to buy everything out. You got a couple of months. And in regards to Mr. York, I sat down with the city engineer, which in La Porte. And he reminded me a lot of him. As far as telling you guys that they can oversee the project, make sure anything, the only way to oversee the project is to put something right. Okay, it doesn't work first time. It didn't work. So the only way to ensure. The local trades are looked out for is to put something right. Thanks.
Mr. President. Uh, what I'd like to do is, uh. Make a motion. To table. This ordinance on third reading.
I'll second that for how long?
I'd say. A month. So that we would have time. To sit down with. Flaherty or the city planner would have time to sit down with Flaherty. And we can talk about this, uh. P L A. To see if we can get a P L A. Ironed out in, uh. That amount of time if they'd be agreeable, uh, to that, you know, right now the gentleman is saying. No, they wouldn't be agreeable to that. But I think if we sit down. In a closed room, I guess you could say, and, uh. Talk more on a business level. Then maybe we could get something, uh. Worked out. Not to say that I'm not for this project whatsoever. I am certainly for this project. I've been behind this project from day one. I just want to make sure. What this company is saying. That they're going to do. And then make sure that the unions are involved and as the gentleman said. That they now, he would consider buying. American-made steel. That we get that in a contract that they will buy American-made steel. That's my motion.
The motion was disabled for how long? Two meetings?
Two meetings. Two meetings, um. I, I'll second that and, and upon seconding that, I want to, would like to say this. Is that. The best watchdogs, the best watchdogs you could have on a project is union labor. Because they are, take extreme pride in their work. And that is a fact, so if there's any underhanded business. And that is a fact. So if there's any underhanded business going on, you'll know it because it'll get reported, it'll get taken care of right away. And I think that is in the best interest of this project in the city of Michigan City and organized labor in La Porte County. And, um, I, I believe that a PLA is the only way to go on this project. Cause I, I'm not satisfied with the comments that were made tonight. I brought up the fact of, of what kind of content you're going to have in the facility. And not in, on the comments that were made, it's forty percent in the parking garage. I ain't even got a problem with that. Okay, because I know there's going to be some structural steel in that, in that parking garage. And you know, the fact of the matter is, is that we have a lot of other issues involved, but I think by bringing in organized labor, a lot of things will get solved. And it'll be better for the project and better for us in general as a community. We won't have to worry about any problems like I'm going to say it like La Porte, okay? And there is a lot, there was a lot of problems over there. And, um, some people might be said, yeah, you're getting your bids coming in. And I was thinking to myself going through this whole project or through the legislative project that we sure were moving along at a very quick pace. And so I believe that it's not going to hurt one thing on the project to work out some kind of thing with, with the organized labor in La Porte County. And I think it's the best thing for our community. And, you know, we're doing a lot of things here. We're doing a lot of things. We're leasing Michigan Boulevard, which, you know, I, I think a lot of things that are going on. So if you're going to make that investment, why shouldn't we use union labor as much as possible on this, on this job? So I'm seconding that. I'm seconding that.
We have a motion to table for two meetings by Councilman Don Presmelinski and seconded by Councilman Paul Presmelinski. Uh, Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Nay.
Ms. Zegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Nay.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Ms. Dyche?
Nay.
And Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Aye.
That's four in favor and five opposed.
Uh, any comments from the council?
Yeah, I have a couple. And I, I do have some questions that I need to, I need to be answered. That's why I want to make sure that have time for that. The timeline, because this isn't something that just happened. Uh, it didn't just spoke through and this has been going on. We've had two, it's gone off to be a couple of times. And, um, and it's been over the course of, I, I want somebody to talk about the timeline because it's not something that just got pushed through.
Yeah, it's definitely not been pushed through. We've had three or two public meetings, uh, public workshops. Uh, one prior to bringing it even before you so we could understand it a little bit more. Um, it was well attended. Um, but where we're at right now, we've been working on this project for approximately three, you know, not going on a year with Flaherty and Collins. Uh, we already had a tight timeframe because of the it was imposed on us on the FTA side and on the NICD side. And to, to take this opportunity, we already have a very tight timeframe to even get this project done. Um, we're still under the kind of gun to get the, to get the parking garage started. Um, uh, we have to have total, Alan, we have to have total project completion by twenty twenty. Do you remember what the, the agreements, twenty twenty-four? We have eight. Yes, to get the project pretty much done, to get the, at least the garage done. And then the, the mixed-use project can wait a little bit longer. We have some time on that. Yeah, yeah, the garage needs to be done next summer, essentially. Um, I say that because they're, they're going to start both, they're going to start one project and then just kind of work, start on the other project simultaneously. Uh, I think there's an economic of scale there to gain. Um.
Are there any deadlines that impact us financially? Um, that, um, because of the, the credits and the things that we have, because I want to make sure everybody understands full scope of what's happening. There's a lot more going on.
Yeah, there's twenty-one million dollars in credits involved in this from the state. So the state has put in some money. They're expecting this project to get done and get completed in the timeframe that we have. Uh, the allocation of money is a hundred million dollars, um, total. Uh, we're sitting right at a hundred million. We, we have no more money. The, the money that's being allocated by this bond is the, the creativeness of getting this financing in place allowed us to go to twenty-two, to, to, to tap the twenty-two million. Um, that there is no more to go. Uh, the state has come in with fifteen million and then they came back with twenty-one million. So they're pretty much tapped out as well. This is one of the largest tax credit deals ever, um, allocated, I think, in the state. Um, there's also a, uh, with that tax credit. Um, we talked a little bit about, you know, Flaherty and Collins leaving. They really can't leave because with the tax credits, the way that that's structured. Um, they would have, if they sell a project, they would have to pay back an exorbitant amount of money for those tax credits. Plus, that's just not what they do. Well, Mr. Allen, Mr. Sernick was right. We selected this developer because of their track record, they're holding, they add this to the portfolio so they can do other projects. Um, timeline, sorry, going back to the timeline, um, I, 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 I wish I had the agreement in front of me. I can't remember all the timelines from the agreement. But yes, there is a very tight timeline frame on this and NICD is expecting us to deliver in that timeframe. I can tell you that. Um, and the FTA as well. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact dates.
Councilwoman Jigus.
So this was a huge elaborate project with many moving pieces and we, I think we just got stuck in the weeds. Yes, we would like to have more union labor and US Steel and things like that, but it's too, it's a little bit late for those minimal things. What we need to do is get this project done. And as much as I support the unions, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to have oversight because we do not want to happen what happened in La Porte. So if we can in some way get this oversight really like locked down, you know, I, I would say that, you know, we just need to go forward because this project is huge. It's massive. It's one of the biggest in the state and we can't get stuck in the little weeds. So that's my.
And can we have, after these bids come in, and this is my question for, um, for Flaherty. These bids come in with these, you know, with union, non-union. Is there an opportunity? No, will you, I guess, is the question. Will you um, allow us to have a, a meeting with the trades to discuss oversight? Because we, the PLA, like you said, the bids are coming in. We can't start, if you start the bid package over, how long would that take?
To redo the, well, first you'd have to go through PLA agreements and go through the timeframe, which I'm good, that's going to take some time based on our experience of doing it before in past projects. And then going through another bid process, which is another four to five week process on top of once we've got that agreement in place. Uh, plus additional prep time of putting everything together in the packages. It's probably three months at least, I would say, to get back to where we are going to be on Friday. Uh, we, we are open to, once we get in biz, setting down a, and going through them. Ultimately, as we all know, there is a budget we're working to on this project and we have to make that all work on this. Um, and it's, it's a tough construction environment out there. It's a tough construction budget escalation, everything else. We're, we're fighting to bring this all together. But we do need to move forward in order to bring this thing together. Um, but we are definitely open to, once we receive the bids, we've had a little bit of time to vet through them, setting down, um, however, that's setting through Skylar or however we want to set that up. We are definitely open to setting down and discussing those and reviewing them.
Now, Councilman Presmelinski?
Yes, uh, number one, um, since this question is directed at our planning director, since the last meeting, when the questions were asked about uni, um, American steel and things of that nature. How come, uh, the planning department didn't reach out to them? Did they reach out to you, Don? To talk about that? Nobody reached out to me. So also, how come because of knowing the experience in La Porte, how come that was never brought into the fold on even? Have you been discussing this this long? Why you didn't even bring that up to our attention on doing a PLA so we didn't have any problems and even for the good of the project?
We were relying on the developer to put together the bids for that and, uh, just
Okay, oh, okay. Well, you know how I take that personally? With knowing the experiences in La Porte, because a lot of people know about it. Is that I kind of take that as an anti-union position, alright? And also is that I take exception to the remarks that Councilwoman Zaga made about we're in the weeds and, and things of that nature because I'm proud to be a union member. And I've been a union member for fifty-three years in that we take pride, even as steel workers, take pride in our job. And, and this is what it's all about. If we're spending that much money, I cannot believe that we couldn't take two weeks to sit down with these gentlemen. So I don't want to hear all this about work, what, what you're doing, what you're actually doing is you're fast-tracking this thing and you're bypassing, you, you went by the switch of, uh, union labor. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I, I have a, uh, yeah, a couple of comments. Uh, I guess on, on this particular project, we're, we're learning. We're learning about PLAs. We're learning about more construction that'll be coming to the downtown area. And these council members here and council members that'll be coming into a new council. One thing we got to remember now, PLAs, when we're dealing with contractors and developers coming to Michigan City, I don't want to see anything come. If, if I'm lucky enough to be sitting up here the next four years to come in front of me without the discussion of a PLA first. I'm done. I'm done. I'm done begging contractors for information. Nobody knows anything because the bid will be opened up Friday morning. We had two weeks to call a steel company. Two steel companies in Northwest Indiana. I even told Mr. Flattery to call the plant manager at US Steel, and I'm sure he'd be more than happy to put him in contact with the sales department to make all the steel studs or whatever you needed for this project. But what do I get? I get nothing. You didn't even know. So it, it tells me that Flattery really doesn't care about what the Michigan City City Council cares or thinks. All he's worried about is how much money his company's going to be making on this project. Now, I don't mean to be, you know, downplaying your importance or nothing like that. I'm just telling you the way I took his response. I mean, he's not even here. This is so important to him and his company. How come he's not here this evening talking? No, he sent you up here to take care of the, eh, they'll pass it. Michigan City, that's, that's in the bag, man. No problem.
Were there any calls made?
Pardon?
Were there any calls made to the steel companies?
No. No, he said no.
Calls to request them, them to supply for the project? That would be actually through the subcontractors. We buy it as a package. It is a material and labor package. So when we're bidding out to a steel group that's going to be installing them, they're going to provide the material as part of the package within them. So those subcontractors would actually be lining up the material and whom they're getting those from.
I know the, the.
But, but I was still asking, because the question was about making, asking the question, right?
Why can't we use American-made steel on a project? Now, I asked the gentleman, just call them and see if they would be available to bid on it or say they got the production means to make it. And you guys didn't do it. He didn't do it.
I did contact an individual from US Steel.
Oh, did you really?
A colleague of mine is actually their union rep for US Steel. I kind of asked him if they produced metal studs because I didn't know. He said no. So that's where I took the information.
Well, what was his position?
I believe he is one of the union reps of theirs.
Oh, he's, okay. Well, he don't, they don't make them here. They don't make them in Gary. They make them in a different plant, so. Okay, but I'm just saying, we learned a lot. I learned a lot through this whole process. Because I don't know how many meetings the planning department had, but I certainly wasn't made aware of, you know, talking to Flattery and all these other companies. I, I wasn't made aware of it. So yeah, we learned something. Okay.
And I do have a question. I have one more question. I'm sorry that we, we're keep, we keep going back and forth. Um, so I, I know we talked about a timeline. Um, is there, do, what is our contractual obligation and what do we? I know we have a, we have a contract with Flaherty and Collins and, um, what's in jeopardy with, with pushing things out? Uh, I mean, it's, it's important. I know we're, we're muddling through this because we, this is big. We, we've never done anything like this.
Right.
And so I just want to make sure we, we understand.
I think there's probably multiple perspectives on what the delays could potentially impact us. I mean, I think from a construction standpoint, to be honest, we want to be underway before it gets heavy winter. Um, otherwise, we're going to be pushing out until next year. You guys get a lot of snow up here and, and we know that winter conditions are going to be heavy, so we want to get underway sooner rather than later in terms of the construction process, um, that will impact if we start getting into a lot of winter conditions.
You mentioned the other contractual elements that, that Skylar and.
I, I actually will say that you have, that once the project starts shipping, we have about twenty-four months to spend the IEDC money. That's essentially where we're at. So and we know this is going to be an eighteen-month, I think it's an eighteen-month bill if I'm not mistaken. It's twenty-four month, never mind, twenty-four month bills.
Same thing, okay.
There, there are several different components. Let me, I, you know, I can't get past one thing. And you guys, you two brothers have, have said they have them called. Don't forget the fact that you guys, both of you, were going to reach out to Flaherty and Collins with contact people. You said that at the workshop, that you'd reach out to them. And when I talked to them.
I did say that?
Yes, you did.
I don't recall that statement, Alan.
Yes, you did. Well, I don't care what.
Okay, but here's, let me say this. Let me say this. Let me say something. Don't come up here and tell me they had multiple times to contact us. Stay civil, please.
I'm just saying that we were relying on you because I asked both of them.
I'll move for adoption. I will second that.
I have a motion to adopt that. A second, uh, motion by Councilwoman Dyche and second by Councilwoman Jigus. Ms. Dudley on the vote, please.
Ms. Zegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
That is eight in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Delly. Can you please read our last ordinance on third reading? By title only.
Okay. Um, an ordinance on third reading by title only, creating Article Ten in Chapter Twenty-two entitled Rental Inspection Program. And this is introduced by Ms. Vegas.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Um, yes, uh, I have a couple of comments. First of all, the name of the, uh, of the, of the, uh, ordinance has changed to rental registration. Second of all, um, I'm going to just recap some of the features of it. It is five dollars per parcel for registration. It is good for five years. So basically, you know, the landlords are paying a dollar a year to register the properties. And, uh, the due date is January thirty-first. Unfortunately, and, and it involves just the contact information on who is the emergency contact and who is the owner. Uh, unfortunately, despite my best efforts, I still have not gotten the final ordinance. So I am apologetic, but I did what I could on my end to get this done, and it is not finished yet. So I was going to ask the council if I could table again until October third because I am going to have some medical procedures done that I will not be able to be helping with anything in, in the future. However, I will pester them as much as I can to get this ordinance online and printed at the clerk's office so you could see what's left of it, but we really stripped everything out except for registering five dollars a year for five year, five dollars for five years. Contact information, and that's about it. So that's all I have. So I would like to ask to table again till October third.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Second. There were motion to table till October third and second, uh, the motion was made by Councilwoman Jigus and second is by Councilman Mack. Uh, Ms. Delly on the vote, please.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Vegas?
Aye.
That's seven in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Delly. Uh, we have no new business, unfinished business. Nominations, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Police Civil Service Commission expiring September seventh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, to your turn. The incumbent is, uh, Lila Simmons.
Oh, I was about to say something about that. Okay. You fixed it.
Well, got you. Is there, um, nomination?
Yeah, I I, I want to make sure that everybody, uh, is clear. I know that, um,
Ms. Simmons, she actually had a district emergency that she had to go ahead.
Well, she submitted her, her paperwork, um, and it was said that was unclear. Um, and, and I know she contacted the clerk's office because what she received was incorrectly, uh, marked. Um, but she resubmitted on time her, uh, paperwork to be reappointed to the, um, police commission. And she was here to speak, but she had an emergency. She was here earlier, but she has served on there. Um, I, I would like to nominate her. She has shown up every single, um, uh, swearing in. I've seen her there. She's taken the time and the effort to, to continue to do those things. Um, and I fully support that. So I nominate Lila Simmons.
So second?
Second.
Can I, can I ask?
Yes.
Sorry. So on her paperwork, um, she had marked, we had it marked the wrong thing. So she is requesting to be on the this commission. Okay. Can you speak, say that into the mic so that it's on the record? I'm sorry. Um, we did receive paperwork from her and it, when it came through to our office, you couldn't even hardly read her name or anything. And so one of the commissions that was marked was for, uh, the social status. So I was just verifying that um, that was incorrect and she was actually asking to be placed on the police commission.
That is correct.
So we have one nomination for Ms. Simmons, uh, by Councilwoman Dyson, second by Councilwoman Tillman. Are there any other nominations? Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Michael Palmer. There are one nomination for Michael Palmer by Councilman, uh, Don Prespolinski. Yeah, and if I may, uh, I have a, uh, sheet here or a letter from, uh, Mr. Palmer on his past experience on being on a police commissioner, commission. Uh, he, he has served on the Board of Public Works under Mayor Meyer, was a police commissioner for over twenty years. Appointed by three mayors, retired after thirty-three years, uh, operating convenience stores in Michigan City and is currently working locally for Acme Communications in the customer service department. And, uh, currently on the board of members of Advantage Credit Union, serving as the chairman of the board for the past thirty-four years, which is a volunteer position. And he's working for the, it says I work for the members. I have always worked hard at what I do over the twenty years as a previous police commissioner. We worked hard to build a great police department for the city of Michigan City, and I would like to continue to build on that. And as chairman of the board of the credit union, under my leadership, we built a new main office, two branches, and expanded our customer service. Thank you for your consideration, Michael Palmer.
We have one nomination for Michael Palmer. There are second. Are any other nominations?
Casey McCormick?
Those are applicants. And you, that was, uh, of the other applicant.
That was, yeah. That was the other applicant. Do I need to read anything? Um, yeah. She submitted, um, a letter stating that her na, her name is Casey McCormick. Um, and I am seeking ways to get involved and become a part of the fabric of the Michigan City community. My wife Claire is from New Jersey and works in the TV industry with her own production company. And I was born on the south side of Chicago. We have just relocated after thirteen years in Southern California with our two children, Piffa and Sinclair. I have spent most of my career in real estate development, managing multiple compliance for some of the largest construction projects in the United States. I am the founding partner of the film of the firm, I'm sorry, which is now the largest in the United States in our space. The firm is in equation, acquisition mode after partnering with private equity partners in twenty-twenty-one. I am also a founding partner in several other businesses with an entrepreneurial spirit. Over the years, I have been involved in community in several ways, most recently as part of the parent council of our children's school in California. We are currently parishioners at Notre Dame. My parents were both public servants and educators with Chicago Public Schools. And I believe in civic duty to participate in the community. It is something I hope to instill in my children as well to take part in the progress of the community. There are several boards and commissions related to development, construction, zoning, or businesses where I have over twenty years' experience that I would be of value. However, working with others who also have a sense of duty to the community we live in is most important, and I would be happy to get involved in any capacity that is of benefit.
Are there any other nominations?
That is it.
Yeah, um, attorney, uh, we, every nomination does have to be second rate.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we only have one nomination there, so we will be doing the vote on the next one?
Correct.
Yes.
The one nomination was for, uh, Lila.
Simmons.
Uh, nominations. The council has the following appointment to the Michigan City Social Status of African-Americans Male Commission. And the term expires February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and are all one-year terms. Uh, the vacant was the appointment from the Ministerial Association.
I worked to get that changed since we have not heard from them. And also the terms for, uh, the city council appointments from one year to two years to get it over with.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Energy System Group ESG, year three Performance Guarantee Savings Report for the city of Michigan City.
Uh, and I'll respond, uh, to that. First of all, I looked at the assignment sheets for committees and subcommittees and all that. And there is no ESG committee, right? I thought there was, but there's not one on there.
I think we took it off.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Initial.
So anyway, but I, you know, I went ahead and, and because I thought it was the chairman of it, but that's because I've been signing these reports as they come in because I was on the president of the city council when we did this contract. So my name is still attached to this, which we're going to get my name taken off of that. This could be because the president should have his name, you know, signed on. Okay, all right, anyway. So with that being said, uh, I had a meeting with, uh, Brad Menick, engineer. Um, Amber, no, Amber wasn't there. Uh, it was, uh, myself, Brad, um, our council attorney, Jewel Harris, was there. And Yvonne was there, and that was last Friday we met. Uh, wanted to see what we had going before the, uh, council meeting, the report back. And basically, uh, each individual except myself, uh, have, has an assignment to come out, to come out of that meeting. And what we're doing is they're, they're gathering information on this contract and questions that have come up about the question, about the contract. And then we're going to meet again in a couple of weeks. Now we're going to set up a workshop for all the council to come in and understand this contract and have, get questions answered that have come up and questions that we as a group have come up with and explain everything at that time instead of getting into a big explanation now on different points. I mean, we'd sit here for another hour and do that. And I think it's just easier and more in-depth that the council members will get to know this contract. Once again, this is another contract that we don't talk about it until we get the papers from ESG to sign it. And we all, we all as council members need to have some awareness of what this contract's for and, and, and where we're going with it. So uh, with that being said, that's all I have to report, and the information will be coming out on the, uh, workshop in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Comments from the public?
Ernie Alahin, three oh two Gladys Street. I just got a couple of things to bring up, uh. I know you're getting all these new sidewalks put in, but, uh, they really need to be maintained. I mean, all around town, you see grass growing up in between them. And that's not helping them. And then I'd like to see something done about it. Right, right out here across the street, the medium in the middle. You got grass growing up in that. From Michigan Boulevard to Cross. I'd like to see something done with the sidewalks before they get destroyed. Thank you.
Tommy Kalovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and I am going to read a proclamation. And this is from the state of Indiana, from the Indiana House's representatives. Be hereby known and proclaim that Melody Kalovic, my mother, is recognized upon the occasion of your eightieth birthday, August second, two thousand twenty-three. Thus, as a member of the one hundred twenty-third Indiana Journal Assembly, I would like to congratulate you on this joyous occasion with best wishes for many more years of health and happiness. And it's signed by State Representative and our former, of the House of Ninth District, uh, our former, uh, Fourth Ward City Councilwoman Pat Boy. I also want to recognize that Wednesday was our first day of school and it was a grand opening with a new Little Wills Early Childhood Learning Center, Twenty and Woodland. You all have been, played a little role in that. You voted to waive the permit fees for the construction of that, and I will thank you for that. I think that's going to be a rousing success. It's going to be a big, uh, you know, it's going to be a big game changer for our students as they move on in their school years. I also want to recognize that Friday is to kick off our football season. Michigan City does have a home game against, uh, against Warsaw. And so we got a really dynamic senior running back in Jane Hart. He's a Syracuse recruit. We recognize another player grew up here in Michigan City, is, is Josiah Jojo Edman. Uh, he's a, he's going to be, uh, uh, playing college football at the University of Michigan, the big house next year. We have a player playing a high level of college football. Uh, that would be Brad Fisk. He's a graduate transfer from Western Michigan. He's at Florida State. And there's also a player, he's a rookie in the NFL for the Philadelphia. His name is Keeler Ringo. He has a lot of family members here. So those are all the players we, we, we need to watch this year. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to take sixty seconds to introduce myself and our company. My name is Scott Franco. The company is Surf Internet. You've heard of our company. We're, we built out La Porte. Now we're expanding our footprint out into the Port County area. We provide fiber to communities and then high-speed internet. Um, our feasibility says, and our data says that there's opportunity and need to, to work here in Michigan City. Uh, so we're going to be, um, hoping that we can work in a spirit of cooperation to explore that further. Um, so I didn't come here to ask too many questions other than just introduce, uh, we're working with, I think you mentioned the other company, uh, Acme Communications. We're actually sitting down Friday to talk a little bit. Um, but so when the time comes soon, we hope that we sit down with the right folks. We can explore how we can work together. We're not coming with a handout either. Um, if, when we work with communities that we, we come to the community because we're already funded and we would like to work in that community. But I would entertain any questions if you do have any. If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Wayne Rice. I've been active most of the night. Wasn't really what I came here for. What I came here for is I filed a tort notice against Michigan City, Indiana for the crimes that had happened within regards to the Michigan City Police Department stealing my camper. I had spoke with the mayor about it earlier. Uh, since nineteen seventy-eight, the US Supreme Court has said specifically in Michigan versus Tyler that, uh, all government officials before any type of search whatsoever, you can't enter any property within regards to searching something and seizing items. In Collins versus Virginia in nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen, they also stated the same thing. When you enter the curtilage, you better have a warrant. That's including police officers and all city officials. Uh, the Institute for Justice just decimated one of Illinois' towns over the same thing to the point to where they were almost dissolved. Okay? An item was taken from me that included my refrigerator, my stove, my air conditioner, and means of cooking when I was, chose to be there. You guys have also said, oh, that house is abandoned. No, it's not abandoned. I'm off in another town right now taking care of a father who had a heart, massive heart attack and is disabled. Okay, so I'm back and forth between the communities so me and my sisters can balance out this, this care situation. Every one of you is going to be older at some point in time and you're going to need some care. Well, if your kids were to abandon you, well, you might be stuck in a boat. I was there the night that he had his heart attack. So I'm the reason why he's still alive. Okay, so the circumstances, when I needed my air conditioner, I didn't have it. So I ended up laying in a hospital. So I ended up laying in a hospital overnight with a IV in my arm. Because you guys wanted to compel forced labor, and that's in violation of the Thirteenth Amendment. Any attempt to, with the sticker on the door, it says, if you do, if you don't mow your lawn. We're gonna find you. Any threat. Under penalty to force somebody to do labor, whether it's for their yard or not, that's a violation of the Constitution. The theft and illegal taking of my camper was a Fourth Amendment rights violation. Along with the e- uh illegal search, which was an invasion of private property, invasion of my privacy and the property. Okay, those are tied together. When you guys tried to contact me within regards to the property. You couldn't do that because one of your uh, the plow people decided to continuously run over my mailbox, no matter how many times I fixed it. He would negligently plow snow up high and fast and take out the mailbox. To the point to where the post office said, oh, we don't feel like delivering mail your house. We don't like the way your mailbox looks. We don't like the way your windows look. Well, uh, there's a U S code under that. They have to deliver mail one way or the other. But they still refused. Contacted the United States Postmaster General. And other avenues are being taken within regards to them. As far as any type of threats of demolition to my house. You guys would be uh. Trying to spoil a claim because there's actually four claims within regards to this property. And they all belong in federal court. Because every form of home that you guys hear that has an FHA on it also has federal insurance on it. And since the nineteen forties, has all been federal jurisdiction. None of your state local courts have jurisdiction to foreclose, handle any hearings whatsoever. The state of Indiana went into consent agreement against one of the companies I was uh, when I'm fighting against. Okay, that was uh the Nation Star, Mr. Cooper and Assurant. Uh, that was out of the uh Eleventh Circuit. There was a universal injunction against them. They never informed the Fourth Circuit when they went to get this uh consent agreement. That that specific personal jurisdiction over those companies was never forfeited and and stayed there. Okay, this is also the same company that steals pensions. They steal union pensions, police pensions specifically. They like stealing those because they can get away with it. Okay?
The time has expired. Thank you.
Nick Pollack, two eleven Anne Street, um, just I apologize everybody for making this meeting last so long. I'll make it quick. Um, while we're on the subject of educating everybody on the council tonight, I just wanna follow up to some of the comments that was said. I can show you. Bid invites that have addenda added to them right before the bid deadline. So two weeks ago, when this council had a workshop and met with Flaherty. They could have added an addenda to that bid invite at that time to require American-made steel and to require. Local labor. I don't even wanna make it a union, non-union issue. I want it to be a Michigan City worker issue. Okay, so they could have added an addenda two weeks ago. So that's BS what he said. Also, I'm glad that they get up here and talk about, we gotta get this building coming out of the ground. Well, for ten of the fourteen years that I worked in the field, I did concrete. And guess what? I worked year-round. Go back and look and see when the Michigan City Hospital project started. I was out there on that project pouring concrete in the wind. The, the seasons don't matter. When you're professionals, it doesn't matter. You know how to do the job properly. As a matter of fact, I worked in Maryville in Northwind Crossing on a project during the polar vortex. The coldest winter on record for Northwest Indiana. Pour concrete that whole winter. So they can sit up here and they could talk to you about their scare tactics and all that is to expedite the process that is favorable for them.
Thank you.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. There's been a lot of illegal dumping going on throughout our city, real bad. Um, I've been working with vector control, the street department. City inspectors, uh. Helping them pick up stuff. I, I just don't know what it's gonna take to change the ordinance to severe penalties. If we can catch these people doing this dumping. Uh, wish those flock cameras will catch some of these people doing something or catch somebody doing something. Maybe someday that'll happen. I just wanna say, um. To Mr. Davis, uh, longtime resident. I think he's eighty-one years old now, from Lakeland. He's greatly appreciated to you, Mr. Simmons. And myself, we um. We were able to reach vector control and I was out there today and started cleaning up the triangle. It's been a long time coming.
It shouldn't have taken that. Long.
A lot of our neighborhoods are.
Am I calling and begging?
Yeah, yes. We, I think we were both calling all the time. And I hope that one day we will finally see. Skylar sitting around here doing all this stuff, promising that Martin Luther King Drive. Will finally be repaid for the first time and since it became Martin Luther King Drive. Um, it it's pitiful. But anyway, I wanna thank um Sean Smith. He's doing trees. This guy's doing everything in the city. I don't know how he's um doing it. I don't know why he continued to do it. Has to be out of love because we're not paying him enough to do what he's doing. Um, Steve Hahn and his staff. Uh, vector control. And as I started my first job was at vector control under Wayne Roberts, um. These guys are pay grossly underpaid. Grossly underpaid. I've been at this for quite a while about the pay of city workers. It's terrible. Without them, this city, look, it'd be in bad shape. We need to take time out and make sure we, we thank them. If we don't do nothing else, have picnics for them. Offer them something else if we can't give them more money. But I just, I just like to say thank you to them and. Say to all those city workers, if I'm elected to office, when I'm elected to office, I'm with you. You need to join a union. You cannot continue to deal in good faith, handshakes or nod, nodding weeks. Um, I feel this gentleman's frustration. I'm, I'm frustrated with this too. Um, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart. Um, I call that man a liar because that's what they was doing. That's my, that's, that's my comment. When Ms. Dyke, you have the opportunity to uh. Bring a lot of African Americans together to try to vote for you. You need to try to bring them to the Union Hall and bring them to those workshops. Use the same energy and effort you're using to get elected into office. I, I just think that that's what needs to be done. I was there as well. Ms. Moore was there as well. Sure enough, a lot of our minorities are not showing up. But are we, how hard are we trying to recruit them and tell them what's going on? After years and years of um. Not being able to have the opportunity to get a good job. Or feeling discouraged or being um singled out, at some point you just feel like giving up. A- and and that's what we have now. Systemic racism, systemic issues that stopping others from doing. Or getting, making them, putting themselves in a better position. I mean this from my heart. Legislation needs to be changed through the state. Elected officials should not be able to sit on redevelopment. Should not have, you, you can sit on there as a liaison, but you should not have a vote. Our community, our neighborhoods are being taken over by people from Illinois and other states. We are catering and building to those people and it's wrong and it's gentification. I don't want my neighborhood to change. Thank you.
Any other council in the public?
Nancy Mulnar, one oh seven K Lane. I wanted to make an announcement about. A unique and unusual opportunity that's happening in Northwest Indiana. On Friday, September eighth, the Climate Leadership Summit Eight is going to be held at Indiana University Northwest in Gary. Um, it's gonna be from nine AM in the morning until five PM. This is actually sponsored by, um. I always blank on the name. What's really special about this is that Sustainability Commission was created out of this. Climate Leadership Summit in twenty nineteen. So we had our birth at one of these conferences. What's happening on September eighth is Andy Janz Davis, our current chair. Will be presenting on Northwest Indiana Region Resilience. And I will be presenting on the creation of our Michigan City Sustainability Commission here. So this is really monumental for us that. Our city is being recognized in a statewide conference. That's being sponsored by Earth Charter Indiana. So thank you very much. Thank you for all of your support all of these years. This made it possible for Michigan City to be. Shining as the bright star at this conference, we're presenting you to the sessions. So thank you.
Good evening, Council Dakota Yulers, seven eighteen Emma Street. I just wanna say that I made attendance to the event at Walker Street Garden on Saturday. Um, it seemed pretty well attended. Uh, my only wish would be is that. Um, if the police or the fire could make an attendance to that, um, I think it would help generate support from the community. And the children in the neighborhood seeing those uh local entities there. Um, so I don't know if you guys could help make that possible. I don't know when their next event is. But the Walker Street Garden is a great asset to the community and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Uh, would any of the board members know if there's any. Circumstances where you guys have a. Uh, help for predatory lenders? Uh, because when it comes to like the police departments, white collar crime and things like that. Even big cities like uh South Bend don't have a white collar crime that can handle, let's say. Same mortgage company and insurance company team up together and they decide to swindle you out of your home by taking your uh. Payments and then applying them into your uh suspense account or. Something like that, just not applying it. And then they'll come back in and. Send off a foreclosure notice to you. It puts you under a lot of stress and. Being as that your old cortisol can take and block your arteries when it forms into plaque. And then they just keep pressing you until you have a heart attack and maybe you'll die, but they'll get that house. Uh, but there, there's a reason for this because. That's how the predatory lending system is actually working. There's an actual book that Wells Fargo published on how to bypass regulators. And Washington DC. And it circulated through JP Morgan, Wells Fargo, Bank of America. And like.
That's probably something outside of our wheelhouse. The chief of police is in the back. I don't know. He may have some uh information that can help you with that part.
Can I, can I make a comment? And, and thank you for coming up here, but um for, for public comment, typically we have about three minutes. I know this is your first time and you've been up, you've been actually adding good comments to the. But um, when it comes to something like criminal activities and things, uh predatory lending, I'm not sure where that goes. But um typically for public comments, I know this is your first time.
Yeah.
It's three minutes.
The, the situation is, these are the same people that are stealing pensions from police departments and ours could be next.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanna make one comment with, well, two comments. Uh, number one, the uh Walker Street. Meet and greet last uh Sunday. I wanna give them a shout out. It was very nice. Um, Monique is doing a great job out there with that organization and it was probably eighty folks there. Uh, had some good food, good conversation. And uh, it was just nice to get out there and talk to those folks. And just to get back to this vote with the uh. Duplex Construction Downtown. And you know, I support. Unions wholeheartedly. And just like uh. Councilman Dabney with that uh PLA. Uh, it kinda came. Short. But, but sweet, cause I had never heard about, I'd never heard about that before. And what I, what I said, I meant. That before another project comes before me, as long as I'm sitting on this council. There's gonna be a PLA. Attached to that. Or I will vote no from here on out. Uh, the reason I voted yes for this. Is, well, uh. I, I knew that, you know, the bids were coming in and on all this other stuff and they got a timeline. So maybe, you know, maybe uh, I'm not gonna say anybody got away with anything. But maybe they did get away with something. This, this go around because. You know, we're trying to get this project going, you know, off, off the square one. And to get it going in the downtown area. But. Even talking to the uh, the union representatives, they know that there's gonna be more. Construction in downtown area. So more of these things are gonna be coming to the council. And to the planning department, to Skylar York, whoever the city planner may be in the future. They have to get the council on board. Early. Okay, early. This kinda reminded me of the uh sewer project out in Long Beach. Where, okay, it's, it's presented to us. You know, in, in the uh, you know, the twelfth hour or whatever the example is that's used, used and used. And or the eleventh hour and. You know, I just don't like being pushed into the corner and saying, okay, you gotta do something or else. You know, we're gonna lose our timelines or we're gonna lose our tax credits and blah, 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 blah. So I, I just wanted to say, and you know, the reason I voted for it. Is the project is here. Let's get the project going and. Hopefully, our inspection department. Is gonna have enough people to go down there and do what they say they're gonna do. Cause that's when I wanna hear from Skylar, how he's gonna be ramping up. This to, to let us know. And I will, I'm gonna call him in two weeks and tell him to come in front of the council. And present to us how the inspection department is gonna keep track of the contractors. Or who's gonna keep track of the contractors on this project? Twenty-two million dollar project and you don't even know. Who's gonna be inspecting it or checking it out? Yeah, and, and it's not, it's not gonna happen. And if the right thing isn't going on down there, I'll go down there to that project myself. And shut that thing down. Sorry, but. It's not gonna happen in Michigan City. And I think all the council members have to take that stand. That if we wanna show the people that we're serious and show this developer that we're serious about we're talking. You know, if we hear something going on, we all gotta talk between ourselves and go down there one afternoon and. Just stand out there or meet with Mr. Flattery or Flattery, whatever his name is, and uh, sit down and have a discussion with this gentleman. Thank you.
And I, I'll just continue with that too, cause I, I did have a, a discussion with Mr. Pollack as well. And, and, and I can tell you that I, I have. I've shared over and over again with Mr. York about um bringing on contractor, contracted work to do the work. Um, and not our local department and bringing on additional bodies um for at least six months. Well, we just brought on one consultant um that's, that is project management. But I don't feel like we, we have the capacity or full skill level to deal with something this big. Um, and it was a rough and it was a hard um vote and, you know, and I. I talk to Nick on a regular basis, uh, Mr. Pollack. And um, I will say that. We do have a voice after this Friday when those bids come in, we still. we do have a voice after this Friday when those bids come in. We still do. I have been in situations even with NIPSCO where mayor has come and showed up on the site and shut it down. So we do have a voice. I think this was a learning experience for all of us because I didn't know some of these things. I think a city our size, I was in a meeting today with two other smaller cities, we don't get opportunities like this. So we we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants and understanding the inner workings of projects like this because we just, we don't get them that often. So I think now we know. Um, I will say too that, um, when it comes to, uh, the Indiana plan, um, years ago, I, I helped fund it, um, fund a, a class here and over time we haven't done it. But one thing I will say and I will not, um, do as a council person is campaign in this chamber because it's my job to be a council person. Um, so that's why I never bring up the election, um, or what any office that I'm running for from this seat. So, um, all I'll say is that, um, the energy that I bring to things outside of the council is the same energy that I bring here. And, um, I've been working with students and taking them to to different jobs and taking them to the, the training center in Maryville because our unemployment rate is low. So we need these young workers to become union members. Um, and we gotta figure out opportunities to get them to the Indiana plan so that they have a, a easier transition into the unions. But, you know, we beg for people to participate, then we don't get anybody there. And, um, and it's frustrating for people like me who, you know, I'm marketing, I'm sending it out to folks, I'm doing radio, doing all this, trying to get people to, I've had the Indiana plan on radio. I've done all these things and we still haven't got people there. So it's on us to get these high schoolers, um, engaged to, to be able, as soon as they, they hit the graduation button, that they're able to be on the jobs. And, and I encourage all of us to do that. But again, um, I wanted to share that because I, I would never, uh, use this chamber for a campaign of any sort. That's why I've never brought it up. And, uh, I will not let anybody say that about me in this chamber as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman President Woski.
Well, I just would like to say that I'm not, definitely not ashamed of my vote because I believe that there's time and as, uh, Mr. Pollak, uh, talked about that there could have been an, an addendum on the bid sheets. So, you know, we, we can say a lot of things that we didn't know, we didn't do this, we didn't do that. But yeah, this project's been going along and everybody knew of, of this problem in La Porte. Well, I just, I guess for myself, I guess that, uh, it shows me that the planning department didn't care enough to think about our workers. And especially, as Nick said, even if they're non-union because you're gonna probably wouldn't, might have non-union there if you didn't have enough guys, you know, to bring on to the site. But the fact of the matter is this, if you had that IPA and you got these, some of these, at least some of these guys there, they're gonna keep tabs on what's going on. So, you know, we shall see, won't we?
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Tillman.
I just have one. Um, I as well just would like to read, um, something that on behalf of my mother. Um, she also received the State of Indiana, Indiana House of Representatives be hereby known and proclaim that Ernestine Tillman is recognized upon the occasion of her eightieth birthday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Thus, as a member of the one hundred and twenty-third Indiana General Assembly, I would like to congratulate you on this joyous occasion with the best wishes for more years of health and happiness. Signed, Pat Boy, State Representative, House District Number Nine. And for those that know my mother, and I just wanna say, Mom, I know you're watching. She watches this every first and third Tuesday. She sits up and watches this. I love you. God bless you and happy eightieth.
Uh, Councilman Dabney, motion to adjourn. Have a good evening.